Good evening.
Good evening, I'm stuck on my phone right now because my PC is not bringing up Zoom so I'm trying to figure that out.
Coming in clear.
Hello.
Hello.
Good evening.
Everybody.
You back home Chris?
Yep. Got back last night at perfect timing just as the Patriots game ended, plane hit the ground.
So did you watch it on the jet?
Yeah, it was kind of nice. It was the first football game I've watched without switching channels one time.
That works.
Nicely served me dinner on the plane and everything was kind of nice. Best part was my wife slept the whole ride.
Would you do get a haircut down while you were there?
Dude, my hair is falling out.
Oh, okay. That's a nice picture of David. Yeah, well, I don't know what's going on with my PC with my laptop thing. It's just not working.
Has yours already been fixed once? Because I know mine's been fixed, Arm has been fixed.
Yeah, I use for Zoom, I use this this laptop that I have my own.
Oh.
I don't use the the other thing. I strictly use that just for meeting minutes and meeting, you know, agenda items. And that's that's over there on the side.
I do the opposite. I do. I have a computer for the just to review the board docs or whatever, but I use Zoom through my laptop.
If I use the Surface Pro, the Town Surface Pro from Zoom.
Yes.
That's what I do.
It looks like I'm in Arlington. So far away.
Not sitting close.
Maybe I can try bringing it up on that, but. I don't like holding my phone while I'm doing this because I can't see everybody. But it is it is past 6:30. Is everybody here?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, so let's open the regular meeting. I'll hold the the remote script until we enter into into regular session when we come back, but we will be moving into executive session in order to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or the public body. As declared relative to the AFSWWE Clerical Union Collective Bargaining Agreement. Is there a motion to enter into executive session?
Motion to move into executive session.
Second.
Any discussion? Justine?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And Jeff?
Yes.
I am a yes as well.
Thank you.
Apologies to those on the line for our five minutes going over. Let me read and get you right into the meeting for this evening. I'll read the script for the hour remotely conducted open meetings as a preliminary matter. This is David Gavin, Chair of the Managed Select Board. Permit me to confirm that all members can hear me. Justine? I think you're muted.
Yes, I am.
Jeff Wanberg?
Yes.
Krista Silva?
Yes.
Armand Dear for Kirian? Yes. Good. I'm assuming everybody can hear us. I'm not going to go through the staff members and people expected to speak. Well, so good evening. The open meeting of the Select Board is being conducted via Zoom. Everybody on the agenda will be participating remotely and we will allow for the public to provide comment via Zoom. The board would like to hear, the board would like to hear public comments and if there is further action that's required by us, I'll add the matter as appropriate to a forthcoming agenda. Depending on the comment, we may, if we're able within the confines of the open meeting law, respond with information as opposed to needing to deliberate on the matter. Please note that this is all being recorded via Zoom so and the meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt our broadcast unless otherwise required by law. The agenda was posted on the town's website and it identifies how the public may join us. Please note that it's we are being recorded and it's everybody is participating via Zoom. Accordingly, be be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer as anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All of the materials for this meeting except executive session materials are available on Board Docs and we recommend the members of the public follow the agenda as posted on Board Docs unless I note otherwise. Before we move to the first item on the agenda, let me cover some ground rules to help us have an effective and clear business for our meeting. I'll introduce each speaker on the agenda and after they conclude their remarks, I'll go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking and remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before you speak. If anybody wants to engage in colloquially with other members of the board, please do so through me, taking care to identify yourself. If there's any public comments after members have spoken, I'll afford public comment as follows. I'll ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses. And once we have the list of all the commenters, I'll call on each by name, although that's for public comment. We don't have a public hearing tonight. So let's begin. First item on the agenda is public comments. Is there anybody who has any public comments this evening? Either just speak up or raise your your electronic hand. I don't see any. So we will move on. Town Administrator Report. Greg?
That's me. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Board and everyone. A lot of people joining, 27 people. That's great. If you haven't noticed, if you haven't met me before, I'm Greg Johnson, the Town Administrator. A couple of things to highlight from my Town Administrator's Report. One fantastic job for the holiday parade and the execution of it. And then it was fantastic. I'm not going to steal everyone's fire, but that was fantastic. Also, the menorah lighting was fantastic, too. And I want to compliment or thank really the town staff, which is my perspective for everyone's support, the police officers showing up, the fire department showing up, the Public Works guys for help send up the menorah in the memorial park and whatnot. I think as far as as far as what I could see, everything went off without a hitch and I'm very appreciative of everyone's help for doing that. Couple of other things to highlight from my report. I am hosting a public forum on December 16th to try to get some community input regarding the potential reuse of of One Summer Street, which is the fire station as we're building a new fire station on Sudbury Street. Megan did a fantastic job of hiring a new conservation agent assistant town planner, Julia Miller, who is a resident and she will be starting next week, next Monday. Megan's nodding her head. Megan also did a good job of hiring a health agent and that health agent is working with the school department to get a vaccination clinic. Did that? Did that happen today, Megan?
Um, yeah, it's going to be December 14th is the first clinic, the second one's January 4th and all the information is is on our website. If people want to sign up and also is communicated through the schools. So we're really excited to be able to bring that to families that are interested in vaccinations for COVID-19. They'll be coming right to the Fowler School.
That's fantastic. So it was next week. I apologize. Thank you so much. Megan and some other town staff also met with representative with Art Space. I know the board is interested in that. So they met with an architect to review plans of working with Art Space to try to get Art Space back online, if you will, fully and want them reoccupied as soon as possible. There's a lot to highlight in the Town Administrator's Report. Those in just a few minutes, those are the things I wanted to, but I I wanted to say, but please, I encourage the public, please go online, please look at the Town Administrator's Report. There's a lot that goes into it. The department heads do a great job of inputting great pictures in there. So and and a couple of information and data and analysis. It's fantastic. So please take your time and go. I could spend a long time looking at it, but I'm not going to. Because I want to move to the next item on my on my agenda, which is the progress with the FY23 budget. So now we're December 7th. So I have a little more than a month to prepare a recommendation for for the next fiscal year to the Select Board. We are beyond reviewing all but the school department submissions for FY23 operating requests and the capital planning committee, who you hear from later, is also well on their way of preparing a capital improvement plan recommendations. And you also hear from Justin DiMarco about this, the kind of first steps towards his recommendations for the water and sewer enterprise budgets and all of that will come together in my Town Administrator's Report, Town Administrator's Recommended Budget in the middle of January. So I do have a good amount of work to to do between now and then. I did meet with the Budget Subcommittee to kind of review where we were, starting with revenue and then going to some assumptions about some high costs for expenses and kind of consolidating and keeping a track of all the various budget requests from the departments. Now the hard part happens, which is see if there's any more revenue we can kind of justify and and then see what we can't pay for and then kind of come up with a balanced budget by January 15th. That's the standard procedure. So those are the things I want to highlight for the board. If you have any questions, I'll take them.
Anyone from the board? On either topic, quick question, Greg, on the the Conservation Agent it was, right, that we hired recently. Can we invite her to our next meeting just to say hello so that we recognize who she is when we walk in town hall and somebody's sitting at a desk? Just tell her no, no pressure, just a normal hello. Nice to meet you. Thank you, et cetera. And and also, I I think everybody on the board got the letter today, which may have even been added on late to our into Board Docs from the from Art Space, the the President of the Art Space. Did you see that, Craig?
I have not.
Basically, an update on what's what's happening. Very thankful for for the money they got from Jamie, but also thankful for our assistance, your assistance, the assistance of town staff, and also highlighting the event that they had this week, the last weekend relative to a fundraiser. And they plan on doing some other fundraisers along the way as well as looking for 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 some additional grants from wherever they can get them. But I think I put that in with your report because of the you mentioned Art Space and and also because it's it's something that we should highlight, given that people are anxious to see that progress is being made.
Yeah, absolutely. Great.
Anybody else? Okay, great. We have a couple sets of minutes to accept November 16th and November 30th is their motion.
Sure. Move to accept and approve the meeting minutes of November 16th, 2021, as shown in authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Motion is made in seconded. Any further comments? Or corrections? There are none that I see. So Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
And Jeff?
Yes.
I am a yes as well. Second set of minutes, November 30th.
Move to accept and approve the meeting minutes of November 30th, 2021, as shown in authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Any further comments? Hearing none. Justine?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Okay, we've got a couple of appointments this evening, more than a couple. We've got three. We'll start, we'll go in the order as they are on the agenda. Sarah Measures, I see that you are here. Welcome. Nice to see you. And you are applying to become or seeking to become appointed to the members to the Conservation Commission. And we did have an opportunity to see your submitted documentation, but why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself and then see if the board members have any questions for you?
Oh, thank you very much. Yes. I've been living in Maynard for about 17 years. I I was working six days a week until about a couple of years ago and I'm working a bit less and so I've got some time and energy to put into something dear to my heart and conservation certainly comes in there. So Maynard has the most fantastic resources in the way of wildlife and nature. And I find that aesthetically quite fantastic and fascinating. So the Conservation Commission, I think, is a good place to help protect and encourage that and also to to share to share that fascination with with other people in some way. So I live close to Rockland Ave, where I walk virtually on a daily basis. And so so it was Caitlin Young who I met there and who sort of worked with her a little bit around the trying to look after Silver Hill. So she suggested that I apply for this position before she left. So, yeah, I'm interested in the wildlife. I know a certain amount about the plants and animals around and I'm very open to learning a lot more. So like to apply for the position.
Thank you. We're glad to have you. Any members of the board have any questions for Sarah?
I don't think you have any questions. I want to thank Sarah for coming in and actually speaking to us tonight, too, because I know there was a little bit of a confusion. But, you know, I really appreciate you taking the time and filling out the questionnaire as as robustly as you did. It's clear that you are excited for this position and and I hope you I hope you enjoy it.
Thank you very much.
You sound like you have the passion, so that's important.
Okay. Since we have no other questions, we'll I'll accept a motion.
I'll move to appoint Sarah Measures to the Conservation Commission for a term to expire June 30th, 2022, authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
I'll give it to Chris because he was the loudest.
Yes.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Chris?
Yes, please.
Armand?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Congratulations, Sarah. Check in with Town Hall. You need to be sworn in so that you can officially vote and participate.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you. Look forward to seeing you around. All right, the next uh appointee is Jenna Dargy, who I saw here on. There she is. Welcome, Jenna. Um and Jenna is interested in being appointed as a member of the Cultural Council. Uh Jenna, you had the uh opportunity to hear how Sarah sort of uh outlined her background and interests, so I'll turn it over to you to allow you to do the same.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jenna Dargy Angelo. I um moved to Maynard in the past year. Um moved from Arlington. Um I grew up in a town very similar size to Maynard in New Hampshire, and I was always very closely tied with my town growing up. Um and being in larger cities, I haven't felt that tie for a while. So when I moved to Maynard, um just instantly refelt that connection and community that I've been missing for so long. Um and so I'm really hopeful and excited to um be a part of a community and help grow and develop um the community. Um so I very much look forward to work with the Cultural Council. Um a little bit about me, I work at um Boston Children's. Um I was always very closely uh tied to the arts growing up. Um played music. I was at that Art Space fundraiser the other night. Um and look forward to uh being part of a group that can help build the arts um in town.
Thank you. Did I mispronounce your last name when I said I think I said Dark?
Everyone does. It's okay. It's Dargy.
Dargy. Okay, I will try to remember that. Uh so board members, do you have any questions or comments?
I I see that I I see that Sarah Lundberg is on. I would like to hear what she has to say.
Hello. Um yeah, we're just excited to have um Jenna, somebody with Jenna's background. She comes from a little bit of a different angle than the typical cultural council member, more of a analytical and scientific background, but I think that that will be really a a welcome kind of um uh breadth for the the cultural council, so.
Any other comments from the board?
I find having an analytical uh mind on the cultural council quite helpful, so. Glad to see you, Jenna, apply for the position.
I was waiting for that.
All right, uh is there a motion?
I'll I'll move to appoint Jenna Dargy to the Cultural Council for a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, and authorize use of digital signatures if approved.
I second it. Give that to Armand, because he was the loudest.
Great. Fair enough.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none. Justine?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Congratulations, Jenna, and as I mentioned to Sarah, please make sure you stop by the town clerk's office to get sworn in so that you are voting legally with the board.
Okay, just anytime the the.
Yeah, just, yep. Somebody should be in the office at all times.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you, Jenna.
And then our third appointment this evening is uh a new police officer, Brandon O'Neil, and I see that Brandon is on with us this evening. And I'm gonna instead, Brandon, I do want to hear from you, but typically what we do here is turn it over to the chief to give us a little bit of a background on the process, what got you here and a little bit about you, and then you'll have an opportunity to say a few words if you wish.
Great, thank you.
Uh, yes, thank you, uh Mr. Chair. Uh I present Brandon O'Neil uh for police officer. Uh Brandon has a degree in criminal justice from UMass Lowell. Uh and Brandon actually knows somewhat of the procedure. Brandon worked for us from two thousand seven to two thousand ten. Uh for reasons, family reasons, he he transferred to Watertown at the time. And then, again, for personal reasons, he got out of policing in two thousand eighteen. At no time was there any discipline for it. It was a uh personal reasons, we'll leave it at that. And so adding him, and he wanted to come back uh with the police shortages across the state, you know, uh feel privileged that he wanted to come back here uh with the department. I think he'll add a lot to it with his prior knowledge of Maynard. Uh he's already trained, and you know, there's some of the things uh Brandon did here. He loves to run. Uh used to do all kinds of races. He worked on my shift, actually, when I was a sergeant for a while uh on the midnights. So I know Brandon, he's a good character, and I recommend him uh for this. Again, he'll be a valuable uh addition with his prior knowledge of the town. Yeah.
Thank you, Brandon. Do you have any comments? I I want to say, when before the chief said that you had been here before, I'm saying to myself, why do I know this guy? And now that's how I know you. You've been here before, so.
Correct.
Uh so welcome back, and uh if you have any words to say, feel free.
Uh first, I want to thank the the chief for um giving me this opportunity again to come back. Um as he said, I I worked here for three years before. I loved the town. It was just personal reasons um that I had to leave. Uh there's actually a few more people still here that I used to work with, which is great. Um so I'm just happy to be back, be back in law enforcement. As he said, there is a shortage going around. Um and I'm just trying to uh I'm ha- I'm I'm grateful for the opportunity to come back to a department I know well. Um but also just give that opportunity of uh to fill in those gaps and uh, you know, just share my expertise and my uh and my leadership, so thank you for this opportunity.
Any questions or thoughts from the board?
I just I just have one comment, and that's I I sat in on the the one of the interviews with them with Brandon and in uh just for some people think it's a, you know, a wave of a hand just to let him back because he was here before, but that's not the case. They put him through the full interview process, just like everybody else, like they didn't know him. So that, you know, if anybody's concerned about that, which sometimes people are, when someone comes back, that was not the case. He went through the full process.
Any other thoughts or comments? Seeing none. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve uh appoint Brandon O'Neil to the Maynard Police Department for an indefinite term, authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Any further comments or concerns or questions? Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call. Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Congratulations, Brandon. Welcome back, and we'll see you around.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Yeah, welcome back.
Chief, will you be doing, just to put you on the spot there, will you be doing an appointment uh for him at Town Hall or not sure?
Oh, uh yes, uh tomorrow morning, you'll be sworn in, if that's uh.
Yes, yeah.
Yes, at eight a.m. If anybody from the board can make it, uh that'd be great, but.
All right.
Yes, it's scheduled with the clerk's office.
Great.
So uh chief, does Brandon go right out and start working?
Uh he has to go through training still, you know, um we have a formalized uh training program. He will have a shortened uh obviously field training program, because he's used the computer systems before. They're the same ones, and he used the same ones in Watertown, so the learning curve will be much shorter. But yes, he still has to go through a training.
Okay, great.
Good luck.
And it's always good to see the all that's the other police officers join in, too. Um when we have these, you know, appointments, it shows the support and the teamwork that already is existing. So uh for those those other police officers that are on, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, uh next item is item number seven, correspondences. There are a number of correspondence for acceptance. Is there a motion to accept them?
I'll move to accept and approve correspondences A through N as shown.
Any questions or comments on any of the uh the documents that came to us?
I did have a I I actually had a question about the Hometown Heroes uh Phase Two. I was talking to Kim Lally about it, and she uh just wanted to make sure, so they're moving into the Phase Two process. Um I I actually am stepping away from um being part of the committee, um but I kind of still get the emails. And so the one thing that they wanted to know is whether or not they needed any kind of additional approvals. You know, they were a committee that we kind of that we created um for the Hometown Heroes. Do they need any other approvals to start moving forward with Phase Two, or is this pretty much enough?
Does it become more of now of of just a uh not an official town committee, per se, but of a of what is the status of the of the group? We're not we're not appointing, we're not appointing members to the Hometown Heroes Committee, so.
Well.
Right.
I I I don't think they need more anything more official approval, uh but but unless the board wants to appoint, but I don't think that's necessary. I think I think it's more like if they if they want access to public resources, then they they need to request that, but I or apply for it, whichever. But I I mean, it kind of keeps it clean if it's not a town committee, because they get donations. So like if they if and.
However, the donations do come through to Town Hall.
Yeah, granted, but it's it's not like it's it's I'm just saying that I think keeping it kind of um separate gives them a little more bandwidth.
Okay, um Becky, it looks like Becky had a question as well.
Go ahead, Beck.
Well, because the donations are coming through and our office is depositing that money, I just want to make sure that it's clear that everyone knows that we are doing work for them. So it it kind of is a joint effort. It might be wiser to have them as a town committee.
Well, I think so the last for Phase One, Chris and I were both appointed to the committee. Um I think that, Chris, are you still on the committee?
Yeah. I'm only working with my free time. I I mean, can I just interrupt, though? Because it's something that Becky just put out there, and I think I think one of the reasons why um we did not make it a town committee to begin with was because it would hinder um the efforts to go out and solicit donations. This be specifically because Justine and I and Kate Hogan were involved. We we didn't we didn't want it to become a town committee because of, you know, the um donation implications. Now, I don't know if that changes in Phase Two, because in essence, in Phase Two, it at least from what I understand is if somebody wants to have a banner and so, you know, it's it's in support of a banner for a friend or a relative or someone that they know, basically, they're going to pay for the banner. You know, they're going to pay for that um banner and and that that piece of um, you know, that piece of property for the time that that it's in in the care of um the town, which is a little different than when we were soliciting donations from other groups.
Because I think they are going to try to do us, you know, if they do, uh and we're we're completely speaking for them at this point. But if they do any kind of fundraising, the the money that they have currently in Hometown Heroes account, that is actually still, I believe, from what I've read, they want to keep that for Hometown Heroes Phase One, because they recognize that brackets are going to break and flags are going to go missing and and things are going to need to be replaced. So I think they want to keep that money for that phase, and then either fundraise or or like Chris said, have people pay for banners for Phase Two.
So I guess I guess so for anybody that doesn't understand what we're talking about, Phase One and Phase Two, uh Phase One in um the Hometown Heroes Banner Program, Phase One in Maynard was the initial group of banners, which I think was fifty-seven. Somewhere in the neighborhood of fifty-five to fifty-seven banners, and they represent our killed in action, um many people killed in action. And now the second phase is opened up to any other service members, men or women in the town of Maynard, from the town of Maynard that served, um you know, in any any conflict, any any branch of the service. So it's a it's a different if it did, it's a different set of rules and um restrictions on the um the second phase, but it's open to basically anybody that somebody wants to uh put forth for um inclusion in the program.
Okay. So we'll just keep accepting it, if that makes sense.
Accepting the correspondence. Yeah, I think we probably should have a further discussion about how the how the um you know, how the process will work, or is the town going to be monitoring the money and et cetera? Or is it actually just an independent group that will go out and uh have, you know, just so we understand and everybody is on board with what we're at?
Okay, I can I can reach out to Ken and have her. Um I know that they're still, they're not meeting again until the beginning of January, I don't think. So um maybe mid.
Maybe they can come into a meeting of ours and just tell us what their plan is going forward, and so we have a full understanding.
Right, and that's what I'm saying. So it might be like the the second meeting in January, or even the first meeting in February might be.
Yep.
For them, but I'll I'll let them know.
Okay. All right, any other questions on the uh correspondence?
I just want to quickly recognize Greg for putting together a a great task force uh to work on the One Summer Street, uh the existing fire station, and there's a a lot of people that are very involved and uh participating. And I think um, you know, I'm looking forward to to the December sixteenth meeting to find out what's going on. But there's a lot of people very much involved, and thanks to Greg that putting together a good task force. Thank you. There it's it's a good team. It's a good team. Yeah. So they're they're doing a lot. They're they're doing like the heavy brain lifting. I'm I'm the I'm the facilitator.
Yeah. I did think that the uh correspondence that we got relative to the costs associated with uh uh yeah, if the town wanted to take down that building, the costs associated with it, et cetera, are very important for people to understand. Um because that, you know, may impact what we think about how we offer that building out.
Yep, and for the public knowledge, we made a we made a page with all this information. So if you go to um it's like the it's like our projects page, so if you go to if you go to the town's website, you look up projects, you'll find One Summer Street, which is the address of the old fire station, soon to be old fire station. It is an old fire station, but it is our current fire station, so we still need it.
Should the name of that be changed to Reed Reed Fire Station Reuse Committee or something, so that.
No, because I don't want people to be confused that we're going to use as a fire station anymore.
Got it. Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right.
It's the.
Just so that people see One Summer Street, they don't know what the heck it is.
And it's more than the building, it's the property.
That's true.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, uh so is there a motion to accept the correspondence?
Yeah, it was made and seconded.
Oh, yeah, all right. And we had the discussion, so uh no further discussion than Chris.
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Next item uh is the consent agenda for twenty twenty-two's liquor licenses, common victualler licenses, entertainment licenses, automatic amusement, used auto dealer carry-in, carry-in alcohol, rooming house, and marijuana license renewals all for this year. And uh in the past, we've we've um I think we might have approached this differently, but I I like the fact that we can sort of combine them all into one. We don't have to, we we used to have to sign them for months on end before the meeting, which was already taken care of by by Becky with our uh, well, assuming we approve this, Becky will digitally sign them for us um with our stamps. Um but so will can we do this in one motion, Greg, as far as you know, for all of the licenses?
Let me check really quick.
I believe we can.
Uh yes. Yes, I mean, if they're if they're listed there, and then we'll make sure that they're listed in the minutes, so it's clear what you what you what you did. Yeah.
And for Becky, um we can assume that all of the um the payments are received and inspections, if they have to be done, I don't think anything might be done required on these, but anything that is required from the town end is all taken care of?
It will be. Um there's a couple of the licenses. One still needs um some um inspections by the fire chief. I think one needs an inspection by the building commissioner. Um there's just a few little odds and ends, but we're all working as a team. Um so things are not leaving my counter until.
And that's the question. So you you hold on to them until you get the sign off from the chief or the building inspector, et cetera.
So you you can you can do a motion that that approves it pending.
Pending.
Pending completion of application.
Yep, and that's what I would suggest we do. So having heard that, is there a motion?
Move to approve the consent agenda item A, uh contingent on all approvals being.
Uh, contingent on all approvals being complete, all approvals, applications being completed as shown. Authorizing the digital signatures have approved.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, any further questions or comments? Hearing none. Justine.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Armand.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. The next item, item nine, is the use of town property, um, installation of holiday decorations uh, by the uh Manor Business Alliance. And uh, in many ways, this might be backwards, because I think that um we have already seen the installation of the lights, which is wonderful.
They look pretty, very nice.
Thank you for having done them, but more so to get um the approval of the board so that Linda Thayer doesn't have to go and take them down.
Especially those the tree trunks look really pretty.
We we wouldn't do that. Um, so we just need a motion. But I do think that um we should also talk for future references um that giving the authority on something like um decorations for the holidays to the town administrator's offices as well as we uh make it clear that there is consultation with the proper safety authorities and DPW is probably a better way. And that way, uh, the um, the the parties involved don't have to wait on approval from the board and, you know, uh, in any given year, but that's up for the board's discussion if we want to up, uh, you know, go forward that way. But anyway, on this one, it's just approval for the installation of the lights by the Manor Business Alliance.
Actually, doesn't it say to move to authorize the?
I don't have, I don't have the, I'm using a different form tonight, so I don't have the actual uh documentation in front of me. But if it does, then let's have that discussion.
Yeah, it does say move to authorize the town administrator's office.
And that would be going forward.
No, that that's not how I wrote the motion. I wrote the motion, and I only wrote it in regards to.
That's a recommendation.
That's true. That's true.
But the conversation, the conversation that Greg and I had, I commented to him that I think that that this is one of those things that we should probably give authority to the town administrator's office in consultation with the police and fire chief and DPW to make sure it goes, it's okay, safety-wise, rather than having the board have to approve it and causing just another step in the in the way, slowing the process down for future years. But for this year, it's, as I mentioned earlier, they're already up. So it's really just now pro forma approval of what's already been done. Uh, but in future years, I don't know if the board necessarily needs to see it.
Hey, I I'm I'm with you, David. I don't think there's necessary for us to see it.
Because we don't see like when they put up the flags for Veterans Day, we don't uh, we don't get permission, you know, to put up the flags of Veterans Day, and although that's the DPW actually doing that and not some other organization.
But the but DPW does a lot of the work in this one, in this situation also, doesn't, don't they?
It was collaborative, like they, okay, well, they don't want, I mean, we don't let anyone put anything up without, you have to. Yeah, but um, and um, but in this case, it was, it's like a lot of the work from the NBA. So it, but how about this, I I can do a future agenda item that unless you want to make the motion now, you can. But if you can, you can either, you can either make a motion now that I just haven't thought it out well enough.
Yeah, let's have a, let's have it as a future agenda item, because it really is a policy. And I don't want to have an approval of a policy on the same night that we are first discussing it, so.
And and all the decorations look so pretty, including the uh, you know, light posts and the garland and everything.
It always looks great.
Yeah.
Great, great job. So um, have we made the motion?
To authorize the town administrator's office to authorize the installation of decorations downtown in vicinity of Memorial Park, Naylor Court, and Main Street as provided by the Manor Business Alliance.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. So thank you. Yeah, Greg, let's get that on the agenda sometime, you know. No rush, because we don't have any holidays coming up that we need decorations for.
Got it.
Uh, next item, item ten, is the proclamation and the use of town property uh, for Lily Wilson's Girl Scout Gold Award on December eighteenth. This is a uh request for uh a ceremony to honor Lily Wilson, who is a uh a Girl Scout who completed a project to earn, well, numbers of projects to earn her gold award, which is really prestigious, just the equivalent of the Boy Scouts Eagle Scout Award. We have very few that have made it through the whole process over time. And um, so there's, uh, as we do for the Boy Scouts, we want to have a ceremony to recognize and honor and also, uh, you know, have a board proclamation for Lily, which has been presented in the uh, in the packet. And so this is just to allow the ceremony to take place. The request was for Memorial Park on December eighteenth. And Justine, do you have any other thoughts on comments? Because I know that you're going to be involved.
Uh, yes, so um Bonnie had, uh, Lily's mom had asked me if um I would be willing to issue the proclamation or if I would be willing to read the proclamation. I have known Lily for um, now I can say decades uh, or over a decade. So there's that. Um, and so, but I I see Glenn is on as well. So um, I think the plan is going to be, you know, they're looking for a space. Uh, they didn't, they couldn't really find anything indoors. Um, so the next, you know, the the next logical uh location was going to be Memorial Park. Um, the one question I think when I see the use of town field or property, um, if it rains, if it snows, whatever, if they decide to put up a like a, an easy up tent, is that going to be a problem? Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure about that.
Yeah, no, we've we've, that's been approved on other, sometimes even without approval, you know, it should, they show up, you know. So that that's not an issue.
I think it's okay.
From my perspective.
Yeah.
Glenn, did you have anything you wanted to say?
Uh, no, um, I'm just excited to have this happen.
And Glenn, uh, my understanding of Lily's project is that it was somewhat associated with her s- uh, schoolwork too. And that it was it's, was it with music and uh and children with that with disabilities of some type?
So um, uh, the the project was with um Spalding Rehab in in uh, in Boston. And uh, it was about um using music for physical therapy reasons. And this is what she wants to do, physical therapy. That's that's where what she's studying right now at Sacred Heart University in Fairfield. Um, yeah, and it was a very good, uh, very interesting project. We collaborated with um, uh, several teachers uh to to get the other right instruments and organize a day uh, for all the kids to to uh play music and 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 uh use a bunch of instruments that that Lily fundraised and and brought into Spalding. And all those instruments, um, are also washable and other things like that. So it's, it was specifically designed for uh that kind of environment.
Really, really in uh interesting project. And uh, congratulations to you and to and to Bonnie as well as as obviously to Lily too. So.
Thank you.
Is there, is there a motion? And before we, before we do vote, uh, this actually raises another issue relative to uh the process that we might want to create some type of a uh, of a policy relative to the use out of town property per se of physical property, but of the use of our uh, you know, uh, loudspeaker system or whatever we might need if we're using DPW assets and everything else, just in the future. So we have a process that everybody knows what we're going to be following. So that in the future, if if the public wants to use town property per se, that we have a part, that we have a process in place, so that we don't have to always question what the process might be.
Well, Dave, it's, no, that's a good point. It's in in the application to use town property. There's a, there's an item that says town equipment needed, and then they list what they need. So the Wilsons did the flags podium.
Yeah, right, right. Yep, okay. All right. Is, uh, we've had the motion? No. We don't have the motion. Make the motion.
I will move to approve the proclamation in recognition of Lillian Wilson in achieving the Girl Scouts Gold Award as presented, authorizing the use of digital signatures have approved. Uh, do you miss that one first, or are you going to vote? Okay.
Go ahead and do them all, if you want.
All right. And and move to approve the use of Memorial Park on Saturday, December eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one from three to four P M in accordance with all federal, state, and local public health and safety guidelines as presented. Authorizing the use of digital signatures have approved.
Second.
Chris gets that because he was first.
Third.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I have a yes as well. Good luck, Glenn. Have have a great event. And I look forward to hearing of all about it.
Thank you. We'll try to take some pictures.
Oh, please do, yeah, that would be great.
All right. Item number eleven is the Sequocentennial Steering Committee Final Report. And I see Jen Pickerell is on, and I saw, I'm looking through. Lindsay, there you are. I
Hi.
Trying to get to the next page. Hi, welcome. And Jen is here too. Uh, I think the plaudits have all gone out relative to the success of the Sequocentennial, every event that we had, um, you know, starting a year and a half ago, whenever it was that it first started, and uh then we were interrupted by a worldwide pandemic. And uh, you know, but an amazing year and a half of uh of teamwork and effort on so many, the parts of so many people. And uh, you know, the landscape of Maynard changed some ways too during that whole thing relative to the uh, the celebration we had at one point with the digital, even though, you know, became part of it, with the the uh plaque that went up down on uh, off of Walnut Street there. Um, and so amazing, amazing time, and I'm sure the board members all have things to say too. But why don't you give us a little summary and close out your uh, your report, and we'll go from there.
Okay, great. Thank you. Sorry for background noise that is inevitable in my house. Is it okay if I um share my screen?
Yep.
Okay. So this will be quick. Um, are you guys all looking at something that says Town of Maynard Sequocentennial Committee?
Yeah.
Yep.
Fantastic. Okay, so this is just a quick report. We wanted to kind of just summarize for you guys. You know, the last several years, this started, I looked back and um, it looks like the first meeting was October second of twenty-seventeen. Um, I was not yet on the committee at that point, but several of our committee members were. But this is the full list of people who served on this committee, um, including some of the former members. This you've already seen before as part of the um, the update that we gave in February uh earlier this year. This is just some of the programming and activity of the last few years. And then this is the twenty-twenty-one programming and activity. So, you know, I'm not going to read through all of it. It's a pretty extensive list. Um, on the left, those are all events that were really produced by members of the committee. And then on the right, these are events that we collaborated with other organizations on, things like Maynard Fest and walking tours. So as you can see, it's a um, an an extensive group effort. There are many, many people and organizations that contributed to this to make it successful. Um, this is a list of of organizations and people we partnered with. I I am a hundred percent confident it is not a hundred percent accurate. So I'm sorry if there are people we're missing here. Um, this was the most comprehensive list I could come up with just going back through all the minutes and the notes that I have, but I I know there were a lot of people that touched this effort. So um, I apologize if we're missing anybody. Please email me and let me know if that's the case. And then lastly, just wanted to give you a sense of the financial um information. I'm still waiting just on the final revenue and expenses for this year from the town accountant, but I am fairly confident. So we started in twenty-eighteen and twenty-five thousand dollars from the town. Um, and we're actually giving you back um thirty-five thousand, probably a little bit more than that. Um, even just today, that what I sent earlier today had thirty-one thousand, and I learned that there was another four thousand in Venmo that still has not been delivered um and will be shortly. So um, and then we still have some branded items that we're selling through the end of the year. So I anticipate that this will go up a little bit. Um, but so, you know, good investment for the town of Maynard. We're giving you back over over ten thousand dollars. Um, so I'm going to stop. That's the end of that. Um, but, you know, again, we just, we just, as a committee, wanted to kind of close out the year and um, give you guys some closing information for all of the activity. I know everybody knows it, but I thought it was helpful to have it in one place, all in one report uh, so that everyone can kind of see the scope of all of the activity for the last four years. Um, the the remaining loose ends we have are, we have a time capsule to fill with stuff, and we have plenty of stuff, fortunately. Um, and close up, we were going to do that on December nineteenth at the um, Maynard Community Band Christmas Concert, but that's actually just not going to work out just logistically, and I think because of COVID concerns, it doesn't make sense for us to be there. Um, so the committee is thinking through how we might do that. Um, I don't know, you know, we've thought about maybe doing a Founder's Day event in April of twenty-twenty-two and closing the time capsule there. Um, maybe, maybe we'll close it and livestream it from my kitchen or Jen's kitchen sometime in the near future. Um, but we have a bunch of great items. Chuck, uh, Carrie Janus, who's on our committee, was really helpful in getting um index cards to all the students in Maynard Public Schools. We have little cards with everyone's name and something about what they think the world will be like in fifty years or what they want to be when they grow up. We have newspaper articles, photos, branded items, the um, a label from the beer that Amory's two made. We want to include the recipe for Maynard Nutrition for the drink that they made parade day. So there'll be a lot of fun stuff in there, and we'll have a catalog of everything. But that's kind of the loose end is just um how we go about doing that and how we uh make sure that it's kind of publicly celebrated. Um, and then also where that time capsule goes. My request would would be not my kitchen and and perhaps Town Hall. I think that's where it's at um for the last fifty years. So that's okay. Once it's closed up, we can deliver it back to all of you.
And we'll be there to open it in fifty years from now.
Okay, good. Yeah, I'll I'll be there too. I'll see you there.
If you're there in fifty years, I mean, you probably get the cane.
Yeah, uh, any comments from the board on this?
No, it is, is words are not, um, I mean, there's no words to explain how how great you guys are and what you've done. Um, I think you should all be proud and the town is proud. And uh, it was just an unbelievable undertaking by by, you know, especially under the circumstances. And um, we're all deserved uh from all the activities you guys put together. And I'm sure there's still some common uh little, little ancillary things happening still. But uh, you should be commended for all the work you guys put in.
Yeah, fantastic job. Just everybody who pitched in a huge amount of effort, I know went into it, and everything was a great success. And you're you're giving us money back on top of it. I can't believe it, so. That's the case, let's just do it again.
Two-hundred-and-fifty-first year. Um, that that does raise a question uh relative to the money that comes in. Do we have like a celebration bin that 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 money can go into as opposed to into the general fund and be spent? Um, if we, do we have a?
No.
No.
Is there any place that we can drop it other than into the general fund?
You'd have to appropriate it as such. So remember, so like how we got the community impact payments?
Yeah.
Then then we had to go to town meeting and you had to move that money into a separate account. So you, um, so right now it's going to the general fund, but the the board has, you know, a community events.
Right.
Line that that like helps. Um, so, you know, anyway, so if them, in the end, it's, it could help in general, the forty-six million dollar budget, like it's not, it's helpful. Uh, but no, you don't have, it doesn't, right now, there's no, it has to go to the general fund.
Unless we want to propose a line item for.
Yeah, an article.
Yeah, okay. Any other thoughts?
I'll I'll just say, lastly, I think um, I'll say thank you on behalf of the committee for giving all of us the opportunity. Um, it was um, it was a unique experience and unexpected, given the last two years. But I think that it was a really, really great committee to work with. I think one of the things that um makes a committee really effective is when you have lots of people with really differing perspectives who all bring their their experience to bear. Um, and I think that really happened here. And so I know for me personally, it was a very, very rewarding experience, and I think I can safely. I think I can safely say on behalf of the rest of the committee that they they have the same sentiment. So thanks for the opportunity and for being so supportive.
Great job.
Absolutely.
Do we have to officially disband the committee, Greg?
So that was a follow up question, Greg. Do we, does our committee, do we need to do anything or do we just, does our term end at the end of the fiscal year?
What, I don't remember off the top of my head. What is your term?
I think the terms, they were renewed in, why, like 2020? I remember we all went during COVID to Town Hall, but
So, you know, it's probably just good policy just to officially discharge group anyways. So if the if the body is done with its charge, there's no point in having the body. So so my recommendation is, one, don't renew their appointments and two, you just officially make a motion. You don't have to do it tonight, but you can make a motion to discharge.
Yeah, let's wait until, whatever date. Let's wait until the end of the year because if there's more money coming in and you guys are the ones collecting it, we want to make sure that that's all sort of clear.
I'll put it on a future agenda.
All right. Well, thank you. And I'm sure we'll be seeing you around. I know I'll be seeing Jen, so there's no. All right. Now we've got the item number 12, which is the this meeting's department overview from the Capital Planning Committee, and there's a presentation that I understand was seen by the Budget Subcommittee already, so they've got a preview of it. And we'll get an opportunity to see it as a group ourselves tonight. Who's speaking? Is it John?
I'll do a couple, kind of do a little.
Yeah, please.
So coincidentally, Lindsay is also on the on the Capital Planning Committee, but John Cantola is actually their neighbors and he is the, he is on the Capital Planning Committee. John Larkin is also on the Capital Planning Committee, but I don't think he's here yet. He had another appointment. And then Douglas Adler, Doug Adler is the fourth, and they need a fifth for the public. If you want to, if you want to get on board. So either John or Lindsay, but it's probably, I think it's John, is Lindsay only have to do one presentation tonight and then John.
Yeah, although she's a wonderful presenter, so would be happy to let her do it. Yeah, John apologized. He tried to, tried to make it tonight, but had some other obligations. So I will be doing the presentation. Am I able to share?
Yep, go right ahead.
Cool. So like Greg said, we're the Capital Planning Committee and just kind of a review of what we've been up to. So far this year, we have received 48 different projects requested by the different town departments and worth an estimated $15.9 million. So if you're looking for something to do with that Sesquicentennial money, we've got some ideas. So you can go through the list, but I don't want to go through every item. There's, there's a lot there. Some of the work that we've done over the course of the last year, we've taken in all of the capital requests and created a master list of requests. We went over and reviewed a lot of requests over the course of a couple of meetings with Justin from DPW. And we've visited two sites, one, the DPW Yard and the Senior Center. Both, Justin from DPW invited us out to tour the DPW Yard to see kind of the state that it's in and the Council on Aging invited us to go take a tour of the Senior Center to see some of the need there. So what we're currently doing, right now, we're reaching out to and trying to get in line to meet with some of the other department heads. Chief of Police, the Fire Chief, and the school departments, just to go through their lists and better understand the requests that they've made. We've got a few more site visits that are on our radar. We want to go take a look at the wastewater treatment plant, the wells, see what's some of the need there and the schools to kind of get it, get a better sense of the need at some of these locations. Right now, we are currently trying to go through a process to prioritize the projects and the requests that we've received so that we can kind of make a, you know, try to make wise decisions about where we're going to spend our money. With the next step, once we get done with our prioritization initiative, is to identify the funding sources. Through the years, we've, you know, we've been dependent on free cash for capital projects. We also try to find different ways to get these capital needs met by either identifying grant sources or putting some of the, taking some of that money and having the department use their operating cash to fund some of these capital items. And yeah, so there's, there's a lot of different ways that we get these, these things funded. The next step is obviously we're working on multi-year forecast so that we can say five, 10 years down the road, we have an idea of what we need to have in order to make sure that that we're updating, repairing, maintaining the capital of the town. So and then obviously, part of our annual initiative, excuse me, part of what we do every year is we recommend the projects that we believe should be funded for the year and that, and we'll make those recommendations to you. I believe we have until January 1st to get that in. And that's, that's pushing us through the rest of this month. So that's, that's all we've got. So just kind of a broad overview of what we've been working on.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
John, I already asked this at the Budget Subcommittee meeting. I found it very helpful to know. Could you go over just a little bit more detail on that prioritization step and how you guys are attacking that one?
Yeah, so we've, we've kind of tried to create a little bit more objective prioritization for our projects. So what we've done is we've kind of broken out six. For some reason, I've got an old version up here. So let me just kind of show you what we're, what we're working on with that. We've identified six different categories for how we want to prioritize the projects, the requests that we've gotten. I don't know if you guys can see that here. So just, okay, there we go. That's better. So this here is kind of our prioritization experiment, I guess. What we've done is we've listed all of the requests, their total costs, when they were requested, everything like that. We've, we've given ourselves six categories of prioritization at work. Prioritizing those from 1 to 10. So the six categories are if the project would improve or a public safety. If we need to complete these projects in order to comply with law or regulation. If the project could have the potential to save the town money or make the town more efficient. Whether or not it is operationally necessary or if it's in dire need of replacement or in need of replacement, how how much it needs to be replaced. And then this year, we, we actually added two more categories for prioritization. And those are, is the project in line with the community vision? Does it fit in with the master plan? And will it support new growth? So those, those were two additional categories that that we decided this year needed to be part of our calculus.
I know none, none scored a 10.
When you have this much and those, you know, the priority, it's hard to get all the way up there, right? When, how do you, you know, compare, like, we're looking at all of these. And this is just one person's exercise. I showed you Doug's, his was the most.
Oh, okay. Never mind. I thought that was the whole group.
Yeah, no, no, we, we're, so we're trying to get them all done and so that we can kind of come together and compare scores. We'll end up dumping an average for each of the, each of the categories and then talk about, you know, where our feelings are on on each of those things, why we decided to say the Senior Center, you know, is you know, has a one for public safety, right? So that's, that's just kind of, yeah. That, that's where we are right now.
Yep. Good stuff.
Yes.
I served on the Capital Planning Committee in one of its iterations way back. We had a similar approach. The, it was a three-member committee at the time, but we had a similar approach in in priorities, prioritization. But his history, long history as to why those, the prior iterations of that committee didn't pan out all that well. Mostly because priorities then get pushed aside for other projects and the plan never sticks. And that's, that's the frustrating aspect.
Yeah, and and with this, it gives us a way to kind of track everything, right? How does the priority grow over time? How does, you know, is, we have records of past years of requests all saved in similar spreadsheets. So we can see how the cost of of each of the projects is continuing to grow as we don't, you know, get to them. So it'll, it'll give us a little bit better continuity through the years. And and I do have to say, a lot of this, all of, all of these spreadsheets, this model was built by John Larkin. He put in a lot of work. He did all the data entry. He, like, he did all of the, you know, setting up the spreadsheets and pivot tables and taught me what a pivot table was. So yeah, a lot of credit to John Larkin on this one.
Comments from the board? Further comments from the board?
Had an opportunity to see this during the Budget Subcommittee, same as Jeff, and just very, very impressed with the amount of work that's gone into this so far, and I really look forward to to seeing it develop in the future.
I'll second exactly that. Fantastic, fantastic job by the committee.
Thanks. Thanks. I'll pass on your, your appreciation.
All right. I guess that's, that's that. Thank you. Great job. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Lindsay.
Can move on to item number 13 on the agenda, which is the DPW issues. We've got three different topics. Four different topics to talk about with the DPW tonight. So let's try to make this as efficient as we possibly can so that we can, you know, get out at a reasonable hour this evening. So Justin, you have four topics. Let's take them one at a time. The first topic is the electric vehicle stations user fees. Do you have a document to share with us on online other than so that people can see it or how do you want to go about doing it?
David, I just put together, sorry, this is Justin DiMarco, DPW Director, for those who are listening on Facebook. So I have the memo that I presented, which is on Board Docs. If you want, you can either have Megan, do you mind pulling up the memo and we can kind of go through it? Do you have that ability?
Yeah, just give me a second.
I can kind of start and we can catch up.
Yeah, go right ahead.
There, David. So last year in February, the Town of Maynard was the recipient of a large grant that funded three electric vehicle charging stations, which equate to six ports at three different locations across the Town of Maynard. Those three locations are public property as that was one of the criterias that allowed for 100% grant opportunity. So the Town of Maynard incurred no costs as part of this project when it came to the installation aspect. The Town of Maynard did obtain some service costs when it came to the warranty and the cloud service that these stations allow us to have. With that process, we're actually finalizing onboarding those. The project is about 90% done and locking in the user fees is one of the final steps. And we're looking to implement these fees based off of some criteria that, one, our ChargePoint systems already developed over their marketing analysis for, the ChargePoint is a nationwide company and they, they provide these charging stations all across America. And they do market analysis based off of each state, based off of electric rates, et cetera, number of dynamics. So the recommendation was compared against our cost and power purchase agreement. The Town of Maynard secures kilowatt hours at 10 cents an hour. The recommendation is 25 cents per kilowatt hour as the user fee. That is to recoup the power costs. It is also to recoup the costs associated with the warranty, the cloud service, and to build in funding for future expansion of these programs into Naylor Court and other locations across the Town of Maynard. As EV stations and EV vehicles become more and more popular, these are assets that will allow us to compete and allow for economic growth in in our downtown and other locations across Maynard. So with that being said, I am looking for the board to adopt the recommendation that you see in front of you, which is 25 cents per kilowatt hour for the initial two hours and then a fee increase to a dollar per kilowatt after the initial two hours. This is based off of a turnover rate and to meet some of the grant criterias as they are looking for dispersion and use of these charging stations. And DOER has done a large amount of research prior with their previous EV charging stations that they weren't getting equal use and they were seeing disparities because there were no time limits. So part of the grant was to have a two-hour time limit, and this is a trigger to allow for turnover and fair and equitable use.
Where would the? I assume this would be done via credit card?
Yes. So David, ChargePoint, for those who own electric vehicle charging stations, this is one of the most popular charging stations and platforms in the country. So you actually get an app and that app has geolocated ChargePoint systems across the country that if you're driving, you can find one. Within that, there also, there's information at each pinged location. So if you geolocated the public library of Maynard, if we implemented these fees, that would actually be part of, if you clicked on it, you would see what the costs are, what the, what the allowable hours are, et cetera. All of the information pops up. This, once we receive approval, we will actually unleash our, kind of our internal marketing campaign, which is Facebook newsletters, et cetera. I just didn't want to push it out there yet until we finalize and have the, the stations operable.
And then does the, does the, the app itself control the fact that the, the power goes off after two hours? How does that get?
So as, where are the admin users? Justin DiMarco and Maya's Facilities Assistant Kyle Reynard have admin rights to the platform as part of the representation for the town. So once we have these approved, we input this into the system and then it is automatically uploaded into the cloud. So let's just say Jeff has an EV station and he has a ChargePoint system. He can go plug in and he could either have it on the EV ChargePoint app. You could have a credit card already implemented or a debit card where it's just charged to that. But you also have the ability to go right up to the station itself and slide the card and pay for it. And all that would be implemented through the platform that my admin rights allow.
And then the fees, the fees go into a revolving fund and that's used for the, the service and maintenance of the charging stations themselves, correct?
That is correct, Jeff. Yeah, last town meeting, we were able to approve that revolving fund in preparation for this exact situation, which allows for flexibility outside of what you guys were just talking about with the excess amount of 1/50 money. With this, we don't have to reappropriate. We do have to reappropriate some funding, but we're allowed.
Talking about adding a fee to the.
John, John Cantola, can you mute? Thanks.
So technically, let's just say we were, where people are using these systems and then we had a failure like recently with Naylor Court and our older system. We would be able to tap into that revolving fund within the fiscal year to actually perform the repairs in a quicker fashion as opposed to what we're trying As opposed to what we're trying to do now with the Naylor Court, um we were not prepared for the system's failures and we are looking for, you know, funding sources to repair those that are quite costly. Some of these stations are twenty, thirty thousand dollars, if not fifty thousand, depending on what they are, so.
Are the proposed fees supposed to be revenue generators, or are they just supposed to be revenue neutral?
So they're a little bit generators, but the little bit of generators is, I would say, two to three cents um which would build a pot for the potential expansion and growth. But I will also tell you that if during the with the ChargePoint platform from an administration, we're able to actually get a lot of use data. Um we'll get reporting data, use data. People actually can provide feedback through the app. So say Jeff doesn't like our twenty-five cents. I know I keep picking on you, Jeff. Twenty-five cent, you're right in front of me. That's a twenty-five cent per kilowatt hour and doesn't think that the hour is worth it. They can write little comments and we'll get feedback. Part of the part of the issue we had with the Naylor Court is we we see feedback from our visual, but we're not actually seeing it from like an analytical and data collection system. So we knew that we had a lot of abusers in Naylor Court where people would just park overnight for eight, twelve hours, just plugged in um without paying anything. So it wasn't a real good turnaround. It wasn't a draw. We'll be able to actually put together a nice amount of data and look at it again and revisit it in a year. And let's just say that, hey, you know what? This is, we're actually losing revenue. We I can come back to the board and say we need to adjust based off of XYZ and have real data to kind of back it up. So ChargePoint does this. That's why the recommendation was twenty-five cents per kilowatt, because they look at the market within Massachusetts and kind of look at this as a whole. Um and that was their recommendation.
So I got I got a question, two, two questions. One is in regards to the structure of fees in comparison to what other towns or charging stations do. Is that in within line?
So Armin, I would tell you for, like I said, the market analysis for ChargePoint, that's the the twenty-five cents per kilowatt hour is kind of the average standard. But every community does something different. So let's just say we're a community that has a large general fund or a large tax revenue and you wanted to provide it for free, you have that ability. We also have the ability to charge more. We have the ability to expand timelines. Now, I will tell you that DOER was really adamant to two hours. They like to see some turnaround and equal distribution. But this is one of those things where a nice year worth of analytical analytical data and we can print out reports and kind of revisit this and look at it and say, hey, we uh we were able to acquire twenty thousand dollars extra within FY twenty-three. Let's use that to put in another charge point system. And maybe we say that's not enough money because we would like stakeholders of the community and the master plan committee is asking us to do more. Then we could up the rate so that it becomes a revenue generator to do an improvement project that kind of meets its mitigation purposes, so.
Yeah, so the information you're going to be collecting, it's going to give you some kind of a history to see what, you know, what what do you do in the future. So this is, I'm I'm just a layman when it comes to this, but when you plug in your, um you know, um you're you're in the electric car. And then what happens if, let's say, the charging stops, but you could still keep the plug in, then you could keep your car parked there, correct?
So this, we could do an automatic shut off, but DOR said that just exactly what you're envisioning, Armin, is sometimes people will just walk away and leave it. We're not getting that change round. That's why they recommended the escalating price tag, because at that point, after two hours, you're getting charged a dollar per kilowatt hour. Yeah, incentivize people to go back and move.
But what if I, what if I go plug in my car, it fills up in less than two hours, but I leave it for six hours? I'm not getting charged anything for being there after the two hours.
So ChargePoint recognizes that and it can ping myself and Kyle. And we can start to have that data to see if people are moving or not moving, and we can actually call dispatch, because the signage is two hours uh two hour limits, and we can actually call dispatch and send a cruiser over there to see if they can't contact the driver and have them move along nice.
It'll be, I I understand the point the board is making, and I think it'll be more of a, that'll be certainly more of an issue if and when we install these in Naylor Court. Right now, I mean, they're behind Town Hall, so there's, there's like a, like we try to, we try to, you know, get some turnover in those particular parking spaces immediately behind Town Hall, just for customers of Town Hall. Uh but generally, people will just pull in, they do what they got to do in Town Hall and they leave. The other two, there's two at the library. And so, yes, technically, people could park there for a very long time. People generally don't. And then same with the golf course. The golfers, they do their game and they get in. So I hear your concern about just sort of people, it's just like occupying a space and no one else can use it for a long time. And uh and I, it's a legitimate concern, but I just, I my, I am more interested in making sure the turnover is in place at Naylor Court if and when we get to that part.
That's fine. Maybe then it's just a rate regardless of whether you're charging or not, rather than kilowatt hour after the two hours, just so they get hit if they're sitting there for two hours, over for two hours for a long period of time. When we get to Naylor Court, I'm fine with what we have now.
Yeah, like a parking meter. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, an expensive parking meter, because we want that spot cleared for someone to use it to charge.
Jeff, I will add that it that it would, it would be pretty costly, because the per kilowatt, depending on what the vehicle is, can take upwards of twenty-five to fifty kilowatts, and you're talking a large expense at that point. That really provides a good turnover. And like everything else, when it comes to regulations, the problem that we were seeing in Naylor Court and the lack of turnover is the proper rules and regulations and signage in place. Part of the grant criteria was that all regulation and signage had to be in place. So once you see these systems, if you haven't already, you'll see that there's parking limit signs, which allow for the police to enforce, whether it's tickets, warnings, et cetera. Turnover very similar like Main Street with the two-hour limits. Whether we enforce it or not is one thing, but there is the ability to.
Right, I'd I'd rather not have, you know, DPW or a tow truck or police need to respond if somebody leaves it for too long, but rather just an automatic charge go into place if they leave their car for too long. It's, you know, not too punishing, but enough to disincentivize staying for longer than two hours. Um, okay. And Justin, should this, this should be kilowatt hour, not kilowatt per hour on the sheet? Is that the typo or am I?
So it's per, it's twenty-five cents per kilowatt hour, and the reason that it's like that is some vehicles charge at a different rate.
No, 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 I I was just getting the slash between kilowatt and hour, so that should be a a dot or something instead of a slash, correct?
That's the abbreviation that was put forth um from DOER. That's how they put it. So I just, that's, I just copied it.
The engineer in me is not happy with that, but that's all right.
You can take it up with the state on that one, Jeff.
Nope, nope.
Presser Justine, any thoughts?
No.
Chris, you're muted.
Justin, I have one quick question. At the golf course, is is that a two-hour limit too? Because if a guy comes up there to charge his vehicle in all intents and purposes on a Saturday or Sunday, he might be gone for four and a half hours.
So they would just get the trigger of the dollar an hour. And then we do have the ability, Chris, so if we get some feedback, we have the this is just kind of a blanket baseline. We have the ability to change each location. So let's just say that in like three months, Gene McGuire in the libraries, seeing that there's not a lot of turnover, not a lot of use versus, and we can even look at this on the platform, and then we look at the golf course in the middle of summer, Chris, and we're not seeing use, and then we get some feedback that says, well, my round is typically three or four hours. I want to, I want to go inside and, you know, enjoy a beverage or something. We can revisit that and change each one on the fly. I would come back to the board, obviously, to change that and make that recommendation. Um but I think at this point, we really need to see some feedback, because at the ChargePoint system, Chris, if you had an electric vehicle charging car, an EV, and you had a ChargePoint app and you plugged in at the golf course and you came back about three or four hours later and you weren't happy with the charge, you could write a text directly to the ChargePoint app that I get to view, and it could be a mean text, which sometimes we get mean emails all the time that says, hey, really, I would really like to see this be something else. And we can start to uh, you know, accumulate that data and provide that feedback in the future for future recommendations.
Thank you.
Justine, any comments?
No, not at all.
Is uh is there a motion on this?
Uh I'll move to approve publicly accessible electric vehicle charging stations. User rate fees is listed twenty-five cents per kilowatt hour for the initial two hours per user and then one dollar per kilowatt hour after the initial two hours per user, effective upon activation of charging stations for public use.
No, that goes to Chris. He was louder.
He's always louder.
I get that a lot, too.
Uh, any further comments from the board? Hearing none. Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Okay. Good discussion. We'll see how that works out. Hopefully, it it's a good move on our part and we uh we see some success with turnover. Green Communities Annual Report.
So this is um, you know, it's that time of the year where we provide an annual report um to continue to participate in the Green Communities um program, which allows us to the opportunity for grants such as the one we just talked about, EV stations. And the and the town of Maynard has been a large recipient of green communities and DOER funds over the course of several years, where uh we've been so lucky that we've actually been downgraded in the in the availability of funds. We used to be able to uh apply for two hundred thousand dollars, because we've received so many fu- so much funding, we can only apply for a hundred thousand dollars. We are actually running out of projects that allow us to meet criteria, because we have kind of closed the gap on some of our um our upgrades across the community. So we are exploring, you know, some innovative projects that kind of meet some of the new age standards. Um but part of the issue that we're having and some feedback that we're having from DOER is the town of Maynard always received almost one hundred percent of the funds, and now they're looking for us to start to uh put a little skin in the game. You know, seventy-five percent here, twenty-five percent here, depending on the project day back, so that we don't have a denial on some of our applications. So I have um proactively started to put in for capital improvement projects that may relate to future green community grants, so that we could potentially put a little skin in the game if the Capital Planning Committee, Greg Johnson and the select board approve that. You know, we can kind of move in that direction, but we are exploring um as many projects as we can to continue to receive funding in the future. So the annual report is one of those things where we actually have to put it together every year and make sure it's implemented properly and accepted. This year, for some reason, DOER moved up the goalpost, um and this is uh earlier submitted than normal. So we kind of had to put it together last minute. I will tell you that there was one large disparity that came out of um my data collection and research when putting together annual report, but it was strictly tied to COVID nineteen and um the school system's response to the recommendations to allow students into the building. We saw a giant increased spike in fossil fuel use, which is Green Meadows' um main source of heating, which is gas and faler as well, to, but it was really green, it was really green metal, and that was based off the fact that um they do not have a traditional HVAC system that can purify air. So the recommendation from Desi and Ask Astra was to allow for air circulation through opening windows, which is kind of counterproductive when you're talking about saving heat. But DOER is well aware of the COVID restrictions and it was reported and they have accepted that.
Very good. No motion is necessary on accepting that report at all, correct?
It does actually have a motion attached to it.
Yeah, just to make it, because the chief executive was, had a, yeah, so please approve it.
Okay. Motion, please?
Move to approve.
Go ahead.
Move to approve the twenty twenty-one Green Communities Annual Final Grant Report as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Armand?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Thank you, Justin. Uh topic C for you is the sewer collection system model agreement.
Yes, so this is um, this is a proposal um put forth by Stan Tech, our water and sewer utility uh consulting slash engineering firm. This is to coincide with our five-year INI infiltration plan that is required as part of our NIPD's permit. INI is um water infiltration in our sewer collection system. So our sewer piping is very old. Water infiltration going into the collection system actually surcharges at the wastewater treatment plant oh um inefficiently allowing capacity uh issues at the wastewater treatment plant. So as part of our NIPD's permit, which is our uh permit to expel the excess um discharge after wastewater treatment into the Aspen River, we are required to perform an INI evaluation over five years with recommended action items and to um mitigate those uh high-level action items, which is large infiltration. This is step one, year one. We have accounted for this in FY twenty-two's sewer enterprise budget and rate analysis. So this is actually, we already have the funding allocated. We were um preparing for this situation. And this is the first step, which creates the model system to allow us to start to move forward with our INI investigation over the next five years. Every year, there will be trigger points, because the feasibility of an INI study can be upwards of one point five million. But we have five years to perform it, so we spread that out in accordance with the requirements that is allowed uh with DEP. So we kind of spread the wealth a little bit here. Um the sewer collection system model is one of the biggest expenses. It's the upfront expense. After that, it's um a lot of expenses that range from ten to fifty thousand dollars in between. Um due to the fact that both myself or Greg Johnson do not have the sign-off authority to approve the contract, um as it is ninety-three thousand. I believe, let me double check my cost here. Ninety-four thousand, three fifty. Um we're looking for the board to approve this, and once approved, we will um put forth the town standardized contracts for execution by uh the chair.
Any questions from the board? I don't hear any. Is there a motion?
Uh I'll move to accept, I always want to approve. Move to accept the terms of the agreement with Stan Tech Consulting Services Incorporated for the development of sewer collection system model for the town of Maynard in an amount not to exceed ninety-four thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars, authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Uh, last portion of this item on the agenda is the Water and Sewer Enterprise Budgets and Discussion on Indirect Costs.
Uh right, so it's our last DPW item of the night, right? So it's the big one, isn't it? Um and a continued effort to um audit and efficiently and effectively look at our, both our water and sewer enterprise funds for not only a financial aspect, but to make sure that we're moving forward with our capital improvement plans and making sure that we're efficiently and effectively utilizing our operation budgets through staffing levels and expenses with consultings, with consultants, with contractors, et cetera. This is an analysis that was performed on um, actually, I think it was performed in September of this year. Um I had Douglas Gardner from Pioneer Consulting Groups provide a proposal for this, and we executed the indirect costs over the fall. This is, in front of you is the PowerPoint presentation where Doug will actually walk through what indirect costs mean, so that you kind of get a quick overview of what that actually looks like. He'll uh, he'll kind of hit a couple of points within the final report, and then you can uh look at the memo that I put forth for the reallocation of indirect costs and disproportionate funding versus proportion of funding based off of the analysis. So with that being said, I will introduce Douglas Gardner from Pioneer Consulting Group, and I'm assuming he will need um share access for the PowerPoint presentation.
Correct. Uh good evening, everyone. Uh nice to see you again.
Hi, Doug.
Uh hi, how are you? So tonight, I'm going to go through my presentation that will uh explain what indirect costs are for those who do not know, and uh I'm going to go through it pretty quickly. And then I get it, jump into the analysis that I completed back in August and September. So it looks like I have uh can everyone see that?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, terrific. Uh so you don't need to see that side. That's just me. So what are indirect costs? Indirect costs are costs that cannot be directly or exclusively assigned to one service. Uh obviously, this came from the enterprise manual. It's not how I normally speak. Uh enterprise funds benefit, often benefit from expenditures made by the general fund. Uh for example, the collector whose salary is paid by the general fund supports and collects revenue for the two enterprise supports and collects revenue for the two enterprise funds. Under enterprise fund accounting rules, those costs should be recognized and charged back to the fund. Simply put, determinable costs for those departments that provide support to the enterprise funds. So I'm just going to give you a little brief introduction of what enterprise funds are. I know you're pretty familiar with enterprise at this fund at this point, but let's just we'll go through it pretty quickly. So enterprises simply an accounting and financial reporting tool. Financial statements are separate from other government activities. So why would you want to adopt an enterprise fund? You want to identify the total cost of the division, the operating costs, the direct capital, the indirect costs, which we're going to get into in a bit. It provides a useful management tool to to leaders of the town. It measures the performance of the fund. You can analyze the impact of financial decisions. It helps determine the cost of providing the service. So you're you're identifying all the costs and you're passing those costs on to the customers that are placing the demand for that service. You're identifying any subsidy that the general fund might be providing. And of course, you're retaining your investment income in any surplus funds. They stay within the fund, the way they can be used to fund capital in the future. So indirect costs, it's an essential component of enterprise fund accounting. Determines determines the level of support from the departments that support the enterprise fund. They must be included in the annual budget. They must be fair, consistent and defendable. We recommend that you have a written internal policy regarding allocations. Indirect costs are not cash cows. That is, you cannot inflate your costs to help balance the general fund budget. So what do I mean by defendable indirect costs? Who are they defendable to? That's the Department of Revenue and the Director of Accounts. The director can reject any community's methodology. If if he or she perceives that that's an unreasonable tax rate. That is, it's not a cost, but it's a tax. Again, padding the general fund through the the enterprise funds. This is just a big long spiel of a former director's philosophy on enterprise funds and or excuse me, indirect costs. On why he may may have rejected certain indirect studies, which I have seen them do. Emerson College versus the City of Boston. That's sort of the test case that went through the courts. That determines whether it's a fee or whether it's a tax. There was a three-pong test to distinguish fees from taxes. I'm not going to go into this in too much detail. You can look through the presentation at a later time. Here's so defending your internal costs, your indirect costs, excuse me. Establish a written internal agreement. You want to review the indirect costs annually. You want to establish an acceptable format. Again, fair inconsistent. Detail, detail and more detail. The more detail, the better off you're going to be. You want to avoid duplication. That is fun. The expenses that are double counted, one in enterprise, one in general fund. So methodology and policy, we want to create a written policy. And we want to establish guidelines, which funds will be included? How will indirects be calculated? What budget year do we want to use? And how often should the policy be reviewed? We want to make sure all involved know their role in the importance of this study. Written policy, simple is better. Limit it to a single page. Identify the purpose of the indirect costs. Straightforward and to the point. Establish guidelines. Create an indirect cost committee. I would recommend somebody from the Town Administrator's Office. Somebody from the Department of Public Works and someone else from Town Hall and possibly a representative of the board if should the town see fit. You want to include the key department heads, somebody from accounting. I think would be a good choice as well. Here are just some of the people who could be on. Which funds will be included? Which enterprise funds? So in in your case, you have water and sewer. But when we, when I conducted this indirect cost analysis for you earlier this year, I also included solid waste. Solid waste is not set up as an enterprise fund at this point. But it may be, it may be considered as an enterprise at some point in the future. I was onsite. I was interviewing all the the different departments that support enterprise. I suggested to Justin that we include solid waste, just so that, you know, we have a we have an idea of where the numbers will be should you decide to go and move solid waste into an enterprise fund. So how will the indirect costs be calculated? I'll go into that in a little bit of detail. Again, which year's budget to use and they should be reused annually, reviewed annually. So how will the indirect costs be calculated? There are a couple of different ways to do it. Being an accountant. I believe the the best way in Department of Revenue also agree with this, that the best way is to estimate the percentage of time and expense that each department that supports enterprise provides. You want, you want to break it down by department and then by employee. And then by expense. So which departments do you want to include? Any department that provides a measurable measurable level of support. Board of Selectmen, Town Manager, Accounting, Treasure Collector, IT, DPW Personnel Retirement. And there are several other departments that you would want to talk to. We do not want to include departments that provide little to no support. What we, what you can't lose sight of is you don't want this to appear to be petty. If somebody provides, if one department provides, say, two hours of support to the enterprise fund each week, it's a minimal amount of time. We're all working for the same person here and that's the taxpayer. So you have to be careful that you don't split hairs and you interview departments and include, you want to interview them, but you don't necessarily want to include them if it's a small amount of time. Which year to use as a basis, you could either use if your next year budget is known, you could use the next year's budget as the basis for the indirect cost, or you could use the prior year or current year budget. So there are a number of different ways you could approach it and really whatever budget you feel works best for you is the way I would recommend you go. So acceptable format. Excel spreadsheets. There are software programs out there that that will help you with the indirect costs, but everybody seems to understand spreadsheets. They're easily easily manipulated. And everybody seems to understand them. So I always recommend you go with Excel. Easily understood by most town personnel, flexible, non proprietary, easily updated in future years. It's going to provide you with the detailed analysis for each supporting department. Itemized by department and position. Try to stay away from generalities, i.e. the collector's office. Say, so you just want to take the entire budget for the collector and say, well, 10% of their time is allocated for to water and 10% is allocated to sewer. It may not be an accurate representation. If you have three or four employees, not every employee is going to spend the same amount of time on the functions for for water and sewer. So it's best to break that down so that you get an accurate representation of how much time is estimated by each employee in each department. You want to identify all attributable expenses. In the spreadsheet format, we want to break down each position in each department, and I will have a couple of spreadsheets to show you so that it will better demonstrate what I'm trying to explain here today. So you want to take the salary. Salary of the position you're looking at, you want to multiply by the percentage of time spent that will give you the position cost. Then you have to factor in the employee's fringe benefits, health insurance, life insurance, retirement, any insurances that employee might have. That's estimated at 35% of their salary. So when you take the position cost, you multiply by 35%. It gives you the fringe benefits. Add that to the position allocation that gives you the total indirect cost by position. Add any attributable expenses and that gives you the total indirect cost. So here are the worksheets that I used when I was out in Maynard earlier this year. This is for the town accountant's office. So we have the town accountant. We have her fiscal 22 salary. And then I had rectangles where I could after or as I was interviewing, I could come up with percentages of time that the town accountant spends on water, sewer and solid waste. I also spoke to the assistant town accountant and then would come up with a percentage that he spent on each one. The sickly buyback, if that applies to say, one employee or both employees, you could take a percentage of each person's time and use that. If the certification is applied, say, just to the town accountant. If they, if their water percentage is, say, 10%, 10% of their time or 10% of their cost for certification would be included as well. Then we break down the expenses. So we conduct the interviews. Interview the department heading key personnel, ask specific pertinent questions. I.e. how do you spend or how do you support the enterprise fund on an annual, quarterly, monthly, daily level? We estimate the percentage of time that each employee spends on enterprise related activities. We base the percentage on specific tasks when possible. Again, if the clerk in the collector's office, their sole function is to collect bills, say, the collector's office collects 100,000 bills a year. And the water department's portion is 12,000 of that 10,000. Their percentage would be 12%. And again, employees within the same department may have differing percentages based on their job functions. Some employees may not support the enterprise at all, while others may support the enterprise fund majority of their time. Calculate the percentages, review the percentages with employees and then make amends or amend those percentages as necessary. The fringes, insurances, retirement. Mentioned that a few minutes ago. Typical fringe benefit is anywhere between 30 and 40%, depending on the town. I use 35% in Maynard. And you want to multiply the employee dollar amount by the fringe percentage. So here's the spreadsheet that was completed for the town accountant. Again, here's her salary. We estimated 20% of her time was water, 15% was for sewer. You multiply the 20 by her salary, it gives you $19,800. That $19,800 is multiplied by the 35% for the fringe benefits. So that means her total cost to support the water department is $26,730 per year. We did the same thing for the assistant. And then there were no expenses down below that were directly attributable to water or sewer or solid waste. Insurance or these are just some of the different insurances that are out there. So here are the employees of both water and sewer and solid waste. We took their salary. We estimated that the percentage of time that they spend because they're blended between water sewer. They spend 60% of their time on water and 40% of their time on sewer. This number is a little bit different than what had been used in the past. In the past, 40% of their time was allocated to water and 60% of their time was allocated to sewer. And my belief on that is because for years, the sewer enterprise fund was much healthier than the water enterprise fund and they could afford to pay for the indirect costs where the water department could not. My analysis determined, and this was determined through discussions with Justin and other employees that you know, more realistic numbers, 60% of their time is allocated to water and 40 to sewer. So we determine what is the town's contribution for the health insurance. Now you have several employees that don't even, that don't utilize the health insurance portion of their benefit. So that's a zero. Some people don't take the life insurance, some do. The retirement was calculated based on a percentage that the retirement director provided to me. And then Medicare is a flat percentage. And here is the retirement calc calculation down here. The total salaries of the employees in the retirement system in Maynard, almost $10 million. Salaries of the water and sewer department, about 470. That's 4.72% of that amount. The Maynard Retirement Assessment is about $2.7 million. 4.72% of that 2.7 is 126,000 and change. Other benefits and expenses, the town audit. We allocate money to each fund. Liability insurance premiums. 426,000 for the entire town. This is what we determined the water and sewer percentages to be. Medicare, here's the health insurance that came from the previous worksheet along with the life insurance and the pension. We come down here to to the insurance costs. You have several, you have the property and vehicle, you have assessed property. So I went through the Maya insurance document, came up with the water value, came up with sewer value and made calculations from there. So I interviewed all the different departments within town. And here are the departments that provide support to the enterprise funds and this provides you with the the overall amounts by department and then for the entire fund. So you can just see you've got, you've got the selectman. You've got the town administrator, town accountant, the assessor, the treasurer collector, data processing, highway and DPW cemetery facilities, municipal services, and then dispatch. We have the benefits down here and expenses. Add everything together, the total indirects, as I calculate them for water was 436,000, for sewer, it was 342,000. And we looked at the budgeted total for fiscal 22. So last year was 307,000 for water and 527,000 for sewer. So water increased by almost 130,000. But sewer decreased by about 185,000. Add the two together, it's about a $55,000 difference between. Add the two together, it's about a fifty five thousand dollar difference between in the study I just completed in the amounts that were budgeted in fiscal twenty two. Fair and reasonable, are the indirect costs fair and reasonable?
Quick question for you, would you, would you, would your analysis suggest that that fifty five thousand dollar number is pretty good in that we were pretty close, or would you suggest otherwise? When you look at the overall, you look at the overall budget.
I mean, overall, it's pretty close, water was understated. And sewer was overstated in the past. But again, I, as I mentioned a little bit earlier in the presentation, the sewer fund had always been the healthier of the two enterprise funds. And it's just the way the numbers had to work in order to be supported by the rates and the budgets. You know, I went into this. I didn't really look in, I mean, I kind of knew what the fiscal twenty two numbers were, but I didn't, I didn't look too hard at them. So I tried to go in with a clean, with a clean slate. You know, it's a lot of, when I spoke to the employees, it's a lot of back and forth, and we just have a conversation, it's not an intimidating process. We just kind of discuss, you know, what do you do to support water and sewer activities, and we'll talk about what do you do on, on a daily basis, what do you do on a weekly basis, what do you do on a monthly basis? What do you do on a yearly basis? And we try to come up with a certain amount of hours and then based on how many hours that employee is paid for. We came up with our percentages. So I believe this is a much more accurate representation of of what the numbers should be. And the numbers for the indirect costs in the past, I don't believe they've changed much in the last few years. You know, they've been carrying the same number for, for several years now. And, and there was talk of, you know, conducting one of these indirect cost studies to come up with an accurate number and then you know, see what they're going to be and then figure out a way to to accurately charge what should be charged. So, you know, fifty five thousand, you know, based on about eight hundred thousand, pretty close. One was overstated, one was understated. And, but overall, pretty close. That was a long answer for.
That was, thank you, I appreciate.
Well, you know, us consultants get paid by the word, so. So are they fair and reasonable, do they appear to be? Yet, does it pass the smell test? Does it look to be fair and reasonable? That's a big part of this. What's the percentage of indirect costs to the total enterprise budget? This isn't a hard and fast rule, but above fifteen percent if the insurances are included, ten percent. If a lot of the insurances are part of the operating budget of the water and sewer or the enterprise fund. Were any of the expenses double counted? And again, if the amount of time that a department spends is very low, I don't believe they should be included in the calculation. We can't lose sight that all the departments are working for the citizens of the town. To recap, establish a written policy, establish committee, establish an acceptable format, conduct the interviews, ensure the costs are fair and equitable. And then you have to ask yourself, can I defend these costs? I don't believe that you need to conduct a indirect cost study every year. You know, I think as you move year to year. If, if there are no major changes in how businesses conducted at town hall, I think you can just, you know, raise the indirect cost by, by a small percentage, say one, two, three percent a year. I have a few different communities I work with that I do an indirect cost every other year. So we do, do an indirect cost study every other year. So we do study one year, the next year we raise by a simple percentage. Come back the year after, do a full study. Come up with the numbers now. I give you these spreadsheets so you can conduct your own studies in the future should, should you choose to. But I leave that up to you. Alright, so I know there are a lot of slides, I went through them pretty quickly. Be happy to go back and expand upon any as you see fit.
So one question I have probably for Justin as far as the, the policy part of that, so do I take it that we have not, it, so it kind of looks like, you know, we've got, you know, it actually looks like there were three steps before doing the interviews. So should we have already done the establish a written policy, establish a committee and the third one before the interviews? Or are we working on that too?
So Justin, I can, I can speak to that. So what Doug's kind of referring to is after the fact that we had an official, you know, consultant that provides this type of standard service that has developed the Excel file, has already developed all of that. That committee could be representative on a yearly basis. So technically, as you heard Doug say, he charges by the word. I don't like to pay a lot of money all the time when we don't have to. So, you know, typically what Maynard was doing was, you know, the last indirect cost study was done in two thousand seventeen. That's a long disparity gap. And part of the, the reason that triggered myself to try to really focus on this was one, that large amount of gap since we've done a last indirect cost analysis, and there actually has been some significant change within Maynard's operational establishment, people retiring, people moving on, the addition, our staffing additions in the water and sewer. So it was an appropriate time to accurately look at this. As you know, we're building our rates for future capital improvements. We have some, some monsters coming up and to accurately depict that, I felt it was very appropriate to move forward with a certified consultant to move this process and development for us. What I'm looking for in front of you today is to consider the reallocation of percentage. And at that point, once you do that, myself, Lori, Greg Johnson, we could actually utilize the Excel file and conduct an internal analysis using that same tool unless there is some drastic changes. You know, this is something that Lori, myself and Greg, we can easily kind of adapt based off of, you know, if there's a salary or if there's a new contract that comes up, we can adjust it and it will calculate it itself. So that is kind of the internal aspect. If you want a more formalized policy, I think that's a consideration for another time. I don't think it necessarily gets in the way of what's in front of you right now. The memo and, you know, the motion in front of you as you speak. I will tell you that the rate development is right on the back of this, the water and sewer rates for FY twenty three on the back of this. And they are actually contingent upon the the allocation and distribution of the percentages because we build our rates off of the operating budget, which indirect cost is a direct correlation to operating budget.
Thank you very much, that sounds good.
From the big picture, Greg. The way I'm seeing this is that the the general budget would decrease by fifty five thousand dollars. Where would that come from?
The, the generous taxpayers of Maynard, so, yeah. So, yes, so it's, it's, you know, could this analysis have been different if we'd done it periodically from two thousand seventeen, possibly? But, so it's hard to say that, you know, we would have taken it as big of a hit, if you will, to the general fund of fifty five thousand, maybe we would have. But it's, it's good to be more accurate anyways, as, as Doug was saying, like, it's not a cash cow, like, you really, you want to capture the costs onto the rate pairs of the cost of the service. So fifty five thousand dollars is, it's could have been worse, could have been worse, but it's, it's, it's important that, that we have more accurate reporting in our budget. And so, yes, the general fund will have to cover that fifty five.
But that makes sense though, that, you know, because it sounds like what, what's been going on is that the general, that the, you know, the indirect cost has been covering some of the general fund.
Right.
You know, more than, than it should have, so this will allow more money to be able to be utilized where it should be in the enterprise funds, correct?
Yeah, and it's, you know, I think of it all like, as, as Doug was pointing out, I appreciate that point, like, it's all going to the same, like, it's the cost of living in, in the town, so you're going to either pay for your taxes or you pay for it through the rate, but you still want your totally to flush, you still want your, you want to be able to drink the water and you want to be able to, you know, have the streets paved, like, it's all, and all it kind of goes towards services we provide to the town.
Any questions, additional questions from the board? Doug, can you take down that presentation just so that we can see one another? Thank you.
There you go, sorry.
No, that's okay.
Jumping ahead to the rate conversation that you just mentioned, Justin, I there's going to be some money from the ARPA, the three million, the, and some money from Kate Hogan from another ARPA source, the four hundred thousand, would it be possible to see what the rate increase would look like if we did not have those? So here's what we would have suggested, and here's what we are suggesting because we did get some funding from these sources.
Yeah, Jeff, so we can actually easily run that analysis, but I will tell you that we would have potentially not even included those projects as part of it, but we can definitely see you, you want to see the disparity difference of kind of the impact of the opera funding.
What would, yeah, what would the rate have, don't, don't just tell me what you think the rate should be, but also what the rate, what would you have suggested for a rate if we did not have those?
If I included those projects in FY twenty three's rate recommendation, absolutely, we can definitely do that, Doug has a, you know, I don't want to jump ahead, but we're, we're definitely providing you a five year forecast, I know you're gonna like.
Although, wow. That he'll like because of the analysis or he'll like. But the yeah, to Jeff's point. My sense is that the beauty of the grants that we got from the ARPA funds is that it allowed us to do projects that otherwise would have been delayed and not done. So I don't know if, you know, granted that we can, we can, we can tout the fact that, look at what we were able to save this year if we had planned them, but I don't think we would have planned them. I think these are, these are literally, these are gifts that we otherwise would not have, have even included in the rate. Because we just, it would have just been too much, that's my sense anyway.
So David, you're not necessarily wrong, and that's kind of why I just said that, but you know, for analytical purposes, just to kind of see what that proportion is, it's actually not that much work for myself and Doug, we've been working the past two weeks, almost daily communications, kind of zeroing ourselves in. And the beauty is, you know, Doug has already put together the Excel sheet with all the calculations, so it's a little bit of a plug and play model. So we can definitely put together a small little proportionary situation to kind of see what the rate would have been if we included those projects in FY twenty three.
Yeah, I just don't want there to be an impression that there's this massive savings because it's not really a savings per se, it's a extra.
Correct.
It's more like a seller acceleration, because we got.
Better, better use of words.
You needed to do those projects.
We would have done it over a course of a number of years or whatever.
Yeah, we needed to do it sooner than later, so it's, this is good, like, we needed to accelerate and.
No question.
Yeah, yeah. Don't get, that'll be, that'll be future meetings, so don't.
Yeah, yeah, right, we don't want to, we don't want to waste that, that excite. Any other comments from the board? I think there is a motion that is asked of us if anyone is comfortable in making.
I will move to approve the redistribution of water and sewer utilities indirect cost allocation sixty percent water enterprise and forty percent sewer enterprise. To be effective July first, twenty twenty two, as reflected in the estimated percentage of employee time used relative to those enterprises and applied to fringe benefits, including health insurance, life insurance and pension costs.
That one definitely went to Jeff. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes, and I am a yes as well.
Thank you, Doug.
Yeah, nice to see you, we'll see in a few weeks.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, bye.
Alright, next topic is the extension of premises, outdoor dining issue. And I will turn it over to Megan, because I think you're probably going to be the spokesperson on this topic.
Yes, thank you. So as you all know, we have very successful outdoor dining programs in both twenty twenty and twenty twenty one, thanks to the governor's emergency orders to allow the local licensing authorities to extend premises for businesses. And last summer, I brought a presentation to this board because we were panicked when it was about to expire. But at the last minute, the emergency order continued until April of twenty twenty two. So we had a little bit more breathing room and the restaurants were able to continue out their outdoor dining season. So now they're, they're wrapped up, everyone's in for the winter. But it's time to really look at a more permanent proposal for outdoor dining in Maynard. So, you know, we have the benefit of two years of experience with, you know, interested partners in the restaurant community in Maynard. And we've learned a lot of things, so, you know, I've been working with the parking authority most recently and the businesses. Mostly, you know, on Main Street that have been vocal about some of, some potential concerns and some things I'd like to see in a policy going forward. And so I just, this is not fully baked yet, but it has most of the bones that I, I plan to present to you at a future meeting date. I have the draft proposal, I mean, the draft policy and the draft application here. And I will bring it back probably at the next meeting because we will have a little bit of a time crunch. Several of these businesses will need to extend their liquor license through the A B C C. So they will need to have a public hearing and to get that going for the spring, it's a fairly tight timeline, so that's why I wanted to bring the draft policy here today. I'd say, you know, the two points that we discussed at the most recent parking authority meeting that had a lot of businesses present are probably the two points of contention that you know, need to get input and discuss. One is should we propose a fee to the select board for this, for this outdoor use of premises? And what, and how should we base it? And the second is discussions regarding using this program to utilize egress and ingress is basically driveways, roadways. You know, we're talking about the access point to Naylor Court is really what, you know, we're talking about. And, or others like that, and is, should that be allowed going forward? And we had a really, Armand was on our last parking authority meeting, we had a really good conversation, there were a lot of folks there that have been following this issue. And, you know, the parking authority was of the mind that and, and some of the businesses were there too. You know, if we are going to charge that thought process or to propose a charge a fee would be to do maybe based on scale and square footage, so that if you're using more, you know, you should be paying a little bit more than a business using just one or two parking spaces. So what, I'm looking into that a little bit and seeing what other communities are doing. And at this point, I don't plan to recommend a proposal. It's going to be a double negative, I think the, the proposal I will support and provide to you is not going to allow for using driveways and roadways. And you know, that, I, I know, we've spoken with the owner of Azakar and Apple Peel, Alma, of course, and she was at the meeting and it's tough because it really does impact her, her plan and what she's done. But at this point, the parking authority feels pretty strongly that, that closing off that access to the municipal parking is not something that they can recommend to the select board, but like I said, I'm still collecting feedback. I haven't brought this proposal to the full E D C yet, plan to do that soon. And the business alliance, but I just wanted you to be aware of the process and more importantly, kind of broadcast this at a, at a higher level so that community members, businessmen, business owners, anyone who has thoughts can send it to send their thoughts to me. I did put it in my newsletter and got a lot of good feedback from people that enjoyed it. I did put it in my newsletter and got a lot of good feedback from people that enjoyed it over the past few years. But we're kind of an open session right now, so if people want to send me notes about how they thought it worked or how we can improve it, I'd love to hear it.
Thank you so much, Megan, for the work of the, the Parking Authority on this and your efforts in it as, as well. This public safety aspect of this too, I would assume, and I, so I'd like to hear the fire and police chiefs' comments as well. And lastly. Is Azakar the only business that actually uses the public, a public roadway? Under the current, you know, other than the ones that are out, that are visible outside, that uses a. An egress or access or egress or whatever you want to call it. To any location, so, yeah. So it's really just one business that we're, that, and you know, a number of like twelve, fifteen tables or whatever they put out. In, in that stretch that we're talking about, right?
Yes, and, and I think it's important to note because I, I would never want to create a policy or, you know, recommend a policy here. That would inhibit events or, you know, something that we want to do in the future. So there is a path to close a roadway or right of way, and that's through the special permit process to this left board to close the street. So that, those type of events, if someone wanted to do something in Naylor Court. You know, that would be up to the select board, but you know, to extend your premises into these egress, ingress, you know, pathways. While, you know, necessary at the time, I think as a kind of a non-emergency policy. There, there, you know, to weigh the pros and cons, it's, it's a little bit tough right now.
Yeah, I, I tend to agree. I think that's, I think that's fair.
I did have a question about the, one of the questions on the application is will you require kind of new equipment, materials or other assistance? I realize that we did provide a lot during the pandemic, but I'm wondering if, if this is going to be a permanent thing that, that business can apply for. You know, yearly, shouldn't they be providing their own? Equipment?
That's a great question, great question. They mostly do their own equipment. We were able to receive some equipment through a shared streets grant. So we do have some, you know, you'll see the, all the orange kind of cones. And barriers, we did receive. About thirty thousand dollars worth of materials from that grant a couple of years ago for this purpose. So that's really what I'm getting at. So maybe I can be a little more specific, like, we're not going to give, yeah, we're not going to give. You know, tables or chairs or anything like that, but say a new restaurant is interested in doing it. And, you know, we really need to sign off on the safety and the traffic piece, and so while they should have their own barrier. They might also need some extra things from us to kind of make sure it's safe from a traffic calming point of view.
Okay. And as far as, and you said that you are going to present this to the Maynard Business Alliance Economic Development, I'm more concerned for businesses that. You know, have expressed concern in the past of other. Businesses being able to expand their footprint without other businesses being able to be afforded the same opportunity. So I just want to make sure that, you know, and, and most people have been very. Understanding that during the pandemic, it was something that, you know, it is something that, you know, we are working to try to make sure that our businesses survive and thrive. But moving forward, I think concern was that, you know, that they did have concerns about these types of things and didn't necessarily want it to be a permanent thing.
Yeah, I think there's probably some businesses that. You know, honestly, I haven't heard from businesses that, that don't want it at all. I, I really, I think there have been some that. You know, thought things could be reworked a little bit and we've, we've brought them to the table to discuss it together, and I think we're in a good spot. But if there are some businesses that don't think it's a good idea at all, you know, that could be true. I think that. Considering a fee so that it's not, you know, it is, you're paying for the, the public property. License agreement is, is, is a step in that direction. Also. You know, we did open this up for. Businesses beyond restaurants at the beginning and, you know, really didn't have takers for retail operations, but. If there was an interest, of course, we would set up a, a policy that would, that would work for, for those groups as well. I think overall, it's really been a. A fantastic addition to the cultural district. And it's just kind of getting it right, but you know, we, we have a lot of. Experience now with these two years, we, you know, I, I'm in a lot of contact with other communities. I'm in a regional economic development group. Where we're talking about, are you, are you charging? How do you set it up? You know, do you do sidewalks? I actually talked to Hudson the other day. You know, about their strategy, so. I think we're in a pretty good space and we can always tweak things if we need to going forward, and I also added in a grievance. Process, so if people have problems with how it's going, you know, it's, it's a two-way, we're a small town, you know. He can just tell me and, you know, we'll, we'll look into it and make sure that we can clear up any, any issues.
So when would you anticipate, because you said that you sort of wanted to escalate this or, or expedite it so that.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to have a full policy to you at the neck, at your next meeting, but I am, I kind of built in, maybe it'd be the first weekend in January. Or the first meeting in January.
Okay.
So then. It'd be a turn, a fairly quick turnaround for the businesses to get in an application. I'd like to have it all at one meeting, so I'm not, you know. Drawing it out, but so they, that all get their application in to the select board. And at the same time, they would start to prepare their. AB, five of them would prepare their ABCC. Applications, so that's a, you know, that would be a public hearing, so, you know, ideally, we would have a meeting where the select board would consider. The applications because they can't actually, so to add another thing in, they can't apply to the ABCC until. This board gives them the. Opportunity to license the public space too, because if they were going to extend their license. The, the ABCC needs to know that they have rights to that area, so it's, it's eventually, it will probably be on an earlier timeframe. Like with Al Hoopil coming in earlier this, like, I think last month. With their outdoor dining and that lease or license renewal. It's going to be, eventually it will be a little backed up to that time, but. This year was a little different because we need to get the policy set up. Do a public hearing for liquor. And, you know, make sure. We get input from everyone, but.
Do you, do you think, given the. Volume, well, we might have three or four businesses, I don't know how many there were that actually came in, that we should have a special meeting just for. This issue to do all four of them or five of them all at once, so the public is aware. That we're talking about that issue and get it all done in one different meeting rather than added on, that's for the board's thoughts. Since we don't have to do it tonight and we don't have to do it next meeting, we might have some time to think about it. I hate adding meetings, but it's, I, I don't want to have a meeting that takes two hours to go through the same topic with. You know, approvals of. Of licenses and public hearings.
That's a good idea, David.
But I'll, I'll leave it up to the board to, to, you know, if the board wants to. And Greg and Megan think it's a good idea. Then. But not if either one of those is not true, then we, then it's fine with me. But thank you very much. Any other questions from the board?
I, I have one other question.
Go ahead.
So you, Megan, you covered the fee and how you're considering. Proportionality based on square footage, what about the absolute value of the fee? Is that going to be tied to town staff time or to the materials? Being used, or how are we, how are we thinking about setting that?
So, you know, Justin and I talked about it and. The, in the staff. It's like the, the, the amount of money, the amount of time it took for us to set all these up. Already happened two years ago, you know, we all went on site, we all walked it, measured. We, you know, we did it all. So now, I mean, at this point, for a new application, there could be, there could be maybe a different fee for a new application, but for most of these. It's really Justin's team putting up. The traffic calming measures, taking them down, it's not a significant cost, so. You know, I think instead of looking at it as staff time as much. It'd be a little bit more of use, the use of the, the property. I think, I'd still, it's still a work in progress.
Okay, and that is parking spaces, which would be revenue generating as well.
Some are parking spaces, some are sidewalks, but it's all, you know, it's a, it's a private entity profiting from public property. So. That's kind of how we're framing it.
Right, thank you.
And I know Megan has done a tremendous amount of work and research and to come up with. Out of the towns, what they're doing in regards to this, and she's getting a lot of, you know, information and feedback.
Okay. Anybody else? Good. The next topic is number fifteen, the marijuana commerce is how it's labeled, and it's the application process and procedures, and this was put on the agenda. Basically at Jeff's request to have a discussion about. You know, I think what, what he wanted to know is process and po, and policy towards going forward with any other future types of things. Jeff, you can. Talk about what you want to hear and Greg, you can talk about what you've got.
I'll go first, okay, so. No, Jeff, were you about to, I was just waiting for you.
You go ahead.
Oh, well, okay, no, in that, in that, so the, the, the process is in place. Based on what was approved by the board in. Last year, so October of last year, is that right, Megan? Thank you, so, and, and of course, like, I'm still in all over thunder because it was a lot of, a lot of heavy lifting, of course, by Megan in particular, and. And so, so the, the process has been public since that time, there's a, marijuana commerce is the name on the web, on the webpage, on the town's website. That we just loop it all under, to try to keep it as transparent as possible, so. You know, the community and the applicants can see just how we do things and what they have to submit and whatnot. So the, and the process as you are, are well aware of, especially recently, it includes an application to. Where it's sort of like notification in the first place to the town administrator's office to, to start the, the process, like, almost like the application. Eventually, that we do need permission from the board, or we, this is how we've been doing it, is seeking permission from the board to, to start negotiation for a host community agreement. If it, if that. If that's negotiated and approved, but, you know, that, that agreement with the select board. Then that, that marijuana establishment can get in line with the Cannabis Control Commission simultaneously. Working with the planning board to get a special permit. Which is a requirement of the town zoning bylaws. So, so that's just like some highlights of, of how kind of like goes down the list, and then, but the Cannabis Control Commission has a, is obviously a very. Robust and detailed application process as well, which includes inspections and, and the whole lot. Megan, what, what are the context, what, would you?
Yeah, I think, so you know, we saw a few applicants come through. I, I get calls from people all the time that are interested in Maynard, want to know about Maynard, and so. You know, I think a little over a year ago. Sometimes it felt like some of these people were coming to the EDC. And it was like, do, do, have you read, do you know anything about Maynard, you know, do you know what our goals are? Do you know anything about our plans? And. Their presentations were a little all over the map, and so at that point, it, we, you know, we decided. It's time to standardize the type of information that they need to provide to us to even talk about an HCA. And so we did research and looked into some other communities. Some have separate. Committees that review applications for host community agreements. You know, we decided to present an option where we use the Economic Development Committee as an advisor to the town administrator. To, you know, help assist review completeness, make sure they're kind of getting. You know, main, like the context of Maynard here, so. You know, we've worked on this application, Kate Federoff, you know, looked it over, signed off on it to make sure it was okay. But we haven't had too many opportunities to test it out, so. I think it's, I think we've learned some things from the recent applicant, and it's a probably good opportunity to. See if, if there are other things that could be, you know, added to it, taken away and continue to revise, revise as appropriate.
Anything else from Greg or Megan? Okay.
Go ahead, go ahead.
No, I have a, just a couple of points and they're, they're mostly for the. My fellow board members, just to see how we want to handle these. I, one thing I kind of felt through the, the two that I've seen come through is that. We often talk a lot about planning and zoning considerations. And we're not the planning board and we haven't had the benefit of having it run through them first, but I think the, the. So I don't know how to solve that problem, and I, I wish I did. But one thing I, I noticed is we ask for renderings and plans, and it seems like we've done that, you know, somewhat consistently above and kind of beyond just the site plan that we see. Or the site map that we, or preliminary site plan, the application, we asked for a little bit more, but then somebody inevitably says, well, those, you know, aren't. Something that we can hold them to just through the HCA process. So right off the bat, I'm wondering if we should agree as a group, if we want to say, yeah, we want to see these automatically, even though we know that we can't find them. Or no, we just agree as a group, the five of us, not to ask for them because of that rule. Which I think is, is one thing I wanted to open up for. Questions.
I think it's helpful to see some kind of renderings, you know, especially with a property that's being developed, like I know when Mass Wellspring came in, it was. You know, it was basically schematics because they, they didn't do anything to the building and there was not any expectation that they were going to renovate at all. But I do, and, and I heard that from, from multiple, you know, members of the public and our board. Including, I think, myself, that you can't hold to a site design in an HCA, which I, and I, and I recognize that. But even though you can't hold them to it, I believe it's important to at least have it out there in the public. So you can point back to it and say, well, these were, whether, whether or not you can hold it. You know, in a contract, you can still say, in a public meeting, this is what you proposed to us, and this is what we were led to believe was going to happen. You know, so it's just, it's just one more thing, I think, that would be helpful when making the decision.
I, I agree with you, just see what, what I, what I would like to see is to have, if we want to go that route, have them come in at the first meeting with those, so they don't come in without them at the second meeting and have it. I, I would love to reduce the number of changes that we're hoping to get between the first and the second meeting. Realizing that there are special site considerations and that there's always going to be a few things, but, so if we want to go that route. I, I'd say let's put them in the application and get them right up front.
Yeah. I, I agree.
Go ahead, David.
No, I think. You know. I, I don't want to. You know, it's, it's water under the bridge for me, this, this whole issue, but. If we're talking specifically about the last business that we spoke about, they told us at the first meeting what their plan was. And it was nothing. They were going to do nothing to that building, and it wasn't until we pressed. Or members of the board pressed, and then they came with these pictures that we know, and we're just saying here, we understand. We can't hold them to, so it's just as was discussed by members of the public at one of the other meetings wishes. Yet, you're saying. That that was important in making the decision at the end of the day, when in reality. The real message they gave to us, and we can, they can point to Justine's point, they can point back to us. Two years from now and say, what do you mean? In a public meeting, we said we were going to show you this. The first meeting we came in, we told you we weren't going to do anything to that building.
But you think that people can never revise their plans? Because that's what they did.
Well, no, well.
Each time after getting our feedback.
Well, you say each time, remember, I got castigated for saying that each time they came in with a new plan.
Because.
So now you're saying that I was right.
Because we asked them to.
That is right, and, and to Jeff's point, I think we want to make sure that we put this up front so that we don't, maybe we don't have to go through these steps, I think that's.
Are we talking about old, are we talking about old HEAs and old plans? Or are we talking about a go-forward business?
Going forward.
We want, we want to talk about going forward.
Let's go forward and not get into who was castigated, who was picked on and all the rest. Let's just move forward because it's getting late and I don't have time for listening to old history. Yeah, let's go. I mean, we're talking about going forward, not going backwards.
Exactly, and I, I think to, to Justine's point, for example, Wellspring is moving, from what I'm hearing, they're trying to move into the Middlesex Savings Bank, so. They definitely should be coming to us with some kind of rendering of what they're trying to do.
But you think they're going to change the way that building looks?
I mean, I don't know, we don't know.
But we can ask, can I, can I give a little bit of input is a. I assume I can, I'm sorry, that was like a rhetorical, so.
You're the town administrator, go ahead.
Yeah, I, yeah. So. Coincidentally, we met with Kate Federoff, she's a, she's a town council, but she specializes in a number of things, and one of which happens to be marijuana commerce. So we met with her today in preparation. So, uh, we met with her today in preparation for a little bit of this conversation, but mostly, um, in anticipation of the next, uh, meeting, which is, we're, we're anticipating come, come to the board for some direction about the negotiations with UPA, UPA, UPA Inc. For, uh, for their, which is, which has been our reference this evening, their proposed marijuana delivery establishment, um, which is at the corner of Powder Mill and Waltham for the public's knowledge. Um, but that's such a funky, such a strange, strange project because, because that license is just for like, uh, a building that is like hardly visible from the street because it's like kind of down the hill a little bit and they're, and they just want to use the garage. But the board was interested in the project redevelopment as a whole, right? So they were showing you renderings of more than just that little garage. They were showing you, here might be some river access, here might be some mixed use and, and it's like a four-story building, which is, looks cool. And then on the powder mill side, they want to do, they're, they're talking about storefronts. But the license that the actual HCA and the marijuana is not, is not the retail and it's not on the front and not on Powder Mill, it's not that four-story thing, it's not the river, it's a garage. So, so it's, it's, um, it's tough. So we were kind of going back with, with Kate about how to kind of, how to, how to talk that over with the board. And I know I, we're, I'm, I am going back, I apologize, but it's only in reference to the conversation of like what to see in an application process. Because, because if, if you're going to say yes or no to a license about, uh, it's actually, in fact, like the, that four-story thing is a separate parcel even. So it's, it's not even the same property. So it's, it's, it's almost coincidental that it, it, it's almost like just irony that it happens to be one guy. Adam Stack is involved with all three. I, I see it as like three aspects, is this the four-story thing, the garage, and then the potential retail space that he wants to do renovations, which he, he's just saying it's just renderings right now. So that's kind of where it gets tough into like, what leverage do we have over him about if he shows us any of these renderings? Do we, do we revoke an HCA license because, because we didn't get the, because we didn't get the beautiful looking brick facade that we thought we were going to get on the powder mill? That could take years. I don't know, it's, it's, it's stuff to say. And I also believe in that particular project, I think, I think he needs the equity. So I think he, I think he's, I think he is leveraging that HCA to, in order to do that. And I think all of, in general, that would be a good thing because it's a redevelopment of the site, it cleans up the site, et cetera, et cetera. We've been over that and the board in particular went over that, and that's good. But I say that in that, absolutely, we can add, we can add a checkbox to this, to this fantastic application that Megan did a year ago. Maybe under section six, project logistics, maybe under section seven, community impact, that just says, show us what you were thinking. What's your vision? Like you, you want to go, Olaf, you want to go across the street? It's probably going to look like a bank, but what, what else, what else do you want to do? And then, and then he can show you what it looks like. The hard part is how do you hold it to him? Because if, because then, because then inevitably this has to go back to the, even Olaf has to go back to the planning board for a special permit. And so if they, you know, that's where it gets really tricky in that gray area of what the select board typically does by tradition and the results responsibilities. And then what the planning board does. So if the select board says like, in your rendering, you showed me six trees. I'll give you an HCA if you give me six trees. I, that's, that's like, I would not recommend that the select work into that level of detail. I would reserve that for the planning board and, and, and the conservation commissioner or whatnot for the site, for the site improvement. But if there are other things that the select board does want to see, that does come out in that renderings, like track of traffic improvements, pedestrian access, sort of like, uh, some sort of like understanding that they're going to be, um, doing designs, submitting designs for riverfront access. Then yes, but that's just to say, you're going to submit designs, yes, okay, yeah, they will. But then leave it up to the planning board about the details. So it's.
How about, how about Greg? Remember one of the, and I forget which business it was that came to us. And I think it was a significant conversation that we had with them. Uh, it was the one that was going to go into art specialties location.
Yeah.
There was some concern about the interior, um, access and the way that it was going to be shared, shared. Uh, you know, I remember there being a discussion about access to the bathrooms and
Right.
Being able to come up from the back and being able to come in from the front and whatever.
Security, security.
Yeah, true, that's right.
Security issues, those I think are significant for us to know about. But that was, that was internal to the, to the building, uh, like what we asked for with a liquor license. When you say, we need, you know, it's the same process with a liquor license.
And a common victular. So a common victular has to show like the, the.
Have to show where things will be within the building.
That's right.
That was, that was an appropriate conversation.
And now, and now it's on the application. So like under section six, you have to provide a site map for, provide a preliminary site plan for the property showing all interests and exits and parking areas. So like that, that, so that, that came out of that conversation. So like it, that's, that's good. And so that's what I'm saying, we could add, we could add a checkbox of like, you could, you got to show a rendering. I'm only talking about the legality, that like. Yeah.
Should we run that section by the police chief before it comes to our desk in the select board so we can offer comment on it? Because I think he offered comment in the middle of the select board meeting when it would have been easier to get that in advance so we could.
That's true.
Oh, sure. Well, I like that. Yeah, I like that idea in general. I always like department.
Which we, we have many, many kind of applications where the fire chief, no problem, DPW, no problem, police chief, no problem. So for, for our security for an HCA, that seems like a definitely a big enough one where we can get the police chief to, to review that before it lands on our desk. So if he has a problem with it, we understand the nature of that problem and can consider it going into the meeting rather than finding about it during the meeting.
Now is an issue also with the one near Ms. Tricia, the one that's going to move across the street. Would be, uh, delivery aspect and how it was going to apply. And I think that, that was important for us to have an understanding. Most of these, you know, I guess one of the, the twists is that in order to have a process that says specifically that you should bring to us, if we want to say renderings, if the guy, if the, if the applicant doesn't own the building, they really can't bring us renderings. Because they don't have the right to change the way a building might look.
That's, I, I would, I would argue that that's not a fact. I, I mean, if you have a contract with a, with a bill, with a, with it's, with a landlord and you're allowed to make, you know, material changes to the building, you're allowed to make material changes to the building. We don't know if he has the right to make changes or not. I, I can make, I can make material changes to, to a building I'm renting a wall pole. But, you know, I can't make material changes to a building I'm in in Burlington.
Exterior?
Yeah.
So.
I can change exterior of my, my, my garage and wall pole anytime I want. When I, you know, in Burlington, until I bought the building, I couldn't, I couldn't. But once I bought it, I could, but.
Just based on, just based on who the, based on who the landlord is, is that?
So it's all contractual. It's, you know.
So that, that sometimes the board does get involved when it does a development agreement in partnership with the planning board. So if the, if the, if the, in through a development agreement, you say, this is how I want it to look, right? And then you have that understanding with the planning board, the select board and developer, then, then that's how it should look. And then, and that could be the frontage, signage, uh, I mean, Maynard Crossing has a thousand, you know, different details of like, this is how it's going to be, right? And then, but other projects may have more or less. So I, I would say, um, maybe that's where this, if we're going back about UPA in particular, because it's very complicated. And I think the board is, my impression, the board is just as, if not more interested in the site as a whole than, than the garage. So it's, um, development agreement might be a better use. But I, I recommend kind of reserving that deliberation until Kate's here because she can, she can help kind of differentiate between what you can get a HCA development.
And I think that that's the, that's kind of the crux of the issue, um, regarding, you know, regarding planning versus, you know, select board as far as our, our two different, um, jobs or responsibilities. You know, I think that one of the, you know, as, as David has pointed out in the past, and I think I pointed out as well, you know, the HCA is, is our, and Kate's pointed out, is, is our time to say yes, no, you know, for whatever reason. And that is you unequivocally, we can vote it down, unequivocally, we can say yes regardless.
Absolutely.
But I think that, and, and I was under this, this impression and I, I've said it before, when, when I voted it in a town meeting and we voted in the bylaws for marijuana and it said that it would be by special permit, I thought that meant that, wow, it's going to be like, they're really gonna, they're going to make sure that this marijuana, that it, that it fits exactly where it should be and, and it's going to be vetted differently than a sub shop or something like that. And bottom line is it's not. It's, it's vetted as, because I know that Bill Nemser said that before, you can't treat it differently than other retail stores. So you can look at exits and, and, you know, egresses and things like that, but you can't treat it differently because it's a marijuana retailer. So I think that once we found that out, I, I know my, my personal opinion is once you find that out, you realize that you lose any control at the planning board level. And so that's why there is this kind of flux in the select board part of it. Because we have some control, but the only control we have is to say yes to move forward and then we lose all control until we issue the license.
Control we wouldn't have if it was a non-marijuana business to begin with.
Yeah, that is true, yes. But the, the important part is that the control that we do have allows us to utilize whatever vision we want to put together for our community in the way it looks. That's where, and that, and that's where I think we need to hope, remember that.
All right, moving on, uh, another point, um, for both the, for Flavia and Adam invited me individually to a site visit. Um, I believe several others as well, and especially after reading about some of the items that happened in Fall River. I'm not sure if I'm comfortable meeting one-on-one, especially with the marijuana. So I'm not sure if we want to put in, I know there's a provision, open meeting law for us to meet as a board or as a group to do a site visit. So do we want to put in an expectation that we will not, or will do a site visit somewhere in this process?
I, I would advise for, to always get more information. So, so.
But I don't know as if I want to mandate that we have to do site visits.
No, but what I was suggesting is if they want to do a site visit, let them know they can invite us as a group, as a select board, if, if they want to, rather than tagging us individually.
Logistically, that might be tough because not all of you can show up. So like you, you just might, it might be one.
Majority, and I think that, that there's a lot of reasons that that might be good is that each individual is not getting a separate story. And here, and hearing different, uh, versions of, of the same, of the same story. Everybody hears the same thing at one, at one time. So from, from, from that perspective, I think it's, it's a good thing to do that. To have everybody hear the same spiel, lack of a better word.
That's true.
Same presentation, um, same explanation, um, et cetera. But to Justine's point and to Greg's point, um, it becomes some of a logistical nightmare if you need to. But if you get a majority, if you get three people there, um, you can, you can do it.
I, I, my recommendation is not to put that as a policy at this time, uh, but you can do, you're the board, you can do what you want. But I, my, my recommendation is, um, you, you, you five, I believe, understand how careful you need to be about the perception of the board and the influence that an individual has over the board and not to make, not to make misleading comments or promises to it, to any, any, we're talking about any business, like you just show up or even a nonprofit, like if it's a private entity, like you, you happen to be representing the board, but you're not at a board meeting, so you can't say yes or no, you're just there for information gathering. So I, I liked the, I mean, I remember with Olaf, three years ago, we tried to, we did organize like, uh, a day at a time in the morning, we all showed up and we all went in there. We did the same thing with, uh.
Green, Green Star, yeah.
Yeah.
Green Star was, Green Star was post, uh, wasn't it?
Yes.
Yeah.
I think I, I think I invited people before, maybe not, but I thought, I thought I tried to, but, but, um, but I don't know if anyone can make it, right? Sometimes you just say like, hey, you know, like they, they, at that time, um, you know, yeah, like maybe it was like a Tuesday morning at whatever and no one could show up, it's fine. But I mean, like you try, you try to, you try to schedule. I like that idea of, of having like, here's the date and time, we're going to come. And that way it's, it's, it's kind of transparent. It's no one, no one can be accused of like getting in a side deal on a different show.
But I think, I think to everybody's point, the more information we have, uh, it, it's best for us to make that decision to, you know, the information. And by the way, Jeff, you mentioned Flavia's name. Is she back in the picture again?
No, I'm just saying that was.
Is, is she out of the picture?
That's what I'm asking.
We don't know what picture she's in or out of. Jeff's reference to being invited to see it had nothing to do with today.
The only reason I ask is because the main, the main point of their presentations was that this was on her back as a, um, yeah, was a minority, but she was going under that, um, you know, under that program where, you know, who, who was doing.
Megan, what's the last you heard, if at any?
Yeah, so I, I talked to her at the end of October and it checked in and she said that they were at that time, hoping to start the local process back up in November. They're, they're working, um, trying to get funding and investments and they're having, having trouble, so.
Is there a deadline to their ability to utilize our, um, HCA?
I'm not sure. I'll look into that. I don't know.
Yeah.
Do they last forever? Could they then sell it to somebody because they have an agreement and now we have some?
I mean, it was with that one group, so I don't think they could sell, they can't sell the HCA. But the timeline piece, I don't know, I do not know.
Plus it's a license and it, and it's, I mean, it's not, it's not a license, so it's, they can't pocket it. But that's, I mean, either way, it's a good.
But it's important because it, it could influence another person coming in that, wait a minute, we've approved something for that location. Do we want another one at this location? You know, that, that's.
If we didn't put a timeline on it, we probably should have and should going forward, I think. Um, I think that makes sense.
To, to, I have a suggestion maybe for, for Jeff's question about like how to, how to sort of in comfort, incorporate, it's getting late, guys. To, to incorporate, um, an invitation. So, and I think that's, I think that's a good idea. It's just to, somewhere in the process, we can say, if, you know, like the board is interested in sort of like an onsite thing and if, and if the vendor or applicant wishes, you know, coordinate with the town administrator's office to, to schedule an onsite visit with, with the board, something like to that effect. And that would be like, it's kind of clear and they're not going around anybody and it's like, you know, and then there'll be an email chain because they'll send it to me and then.
It is getting late and, um, what, what can we develop out of this conversation to move forward? To meet the, the requests that Jeff had relative to a, a process that is established and to see if we have to adjust anything to you guys, to Megan and Greg, to make sure that we have an understanding of what the desire of the board is. Or should we talk about it again?
I, I, I had a couple, I said that, I'm sorry, Jeff. I do have takeaways actually, so I, in the course of this, I've, and I know Megan is too. So like we, I have one, two, I have three things that, that like, we're going to sort of like look at adjusting.
Can bring a redlined version back to see if there's other things, you know, at another meeting.
I have two more points. David, it's up to you if you want me to go over them.
No, go ahead. We have it on the agenda for it.
Number one, I feel we have a lot of, um, discussion at the second meeting about what we did or did not ask for at the first meeting. It, it may have been captured minutes. So my question is, can town staff put together, um, after the first meeting, uh, a more formal memorandum of what the specific asks are for the board? And that might take a few extra minutes for us to list that down and then send that out both to the applicant and to the board afterwards so that we all have, uh, we're all working off of that same sheet of paper. Um, I'm not sure if we've done things like that before, but it, it seems like we get to the next meeting and we debate about whether or not that met what we asked for and we're not exactly sure on what we asked for.
Um, question if you don't mind, I just, I think ideally we would want everything in the application, right?
I agree.
Because. Okay.
And, and yet.
The goal.
Goal, and yet still we end up asking for things that first meeting that we expected the second, if there's a significant change. So if that happens, yes, ideally that doesn't happen because it's all in the application and we just need, you consider after hearing it from the applicant themselves. But can we send out, if there is an expectation of some sort of change or something else, maybe it's just information finding, it's not even a change in the plan, but something else that we wanted, can we set that expectation up that we send out a memo to the applicant and to the board after the first meeting before the second?
Kind of sounds like an addendum to a proposal. Like sometimes you do, you, you have to like, you get information as, as a RFP or, or a bid is coming out there and then you do an addendum afterwards, kind of like tweak it based on, on the vendor and, and his interest. It's kind of what it sounds like, but, but either way, like.
I, I was going to say, I see it almost like just a little bit of a more robust minutes. So, you know, so we do the, do the minutes, but then if that, when that conversation comes up, if there's anything that, that's noted that the board was looking for this or the board looked for that, it would just be, it, um, correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, but it could really just be spelled out in something like that, right?
Exactly.
And that may not be true only for marijuana industry, but for every time we have any type of a, of a guest in that, that we have back for a second follow-up to make sure that we're all on the same page as to what we're expecting for the next meeting.
Usually we ask them to take the notes of what you're asking and deliver it back to you, although I. Usually we ask them to take the notes of what you're asking and deliver it back to you, although we're happy to chime in. And and kind of facilitate that. I mean, I think when you have in businesses, they should be listening to you responding to what you have. But of course, I hear, I definitely hear your thing, but.
I almost think it's to keep us more on track to show that we we that we did ask these questions. And you know, so then we can look for those answers when when they come back.
You don't like the poetry of the minutes that I already, I.
I want to put it up a little bit more prominently. So I I like it so much, I want it there and make it visit the applicant and we all see it and we all on the same page. Because I think we all might, the five of us could ask for, maybe somebody asked for a security question, maybe somebody asked for some more detail in our rendering. But we forget what the other four have asked for, we're always focused on what we want in particular, so it helps ground us as a group as well.
Okay.
All right, Jeff, you had one other point?
Yeah, last one, um, and this actually I think could apply to other groups. Um, how do we get the applicant to stick to ten minutes? What's the best?
That's the responsibility of the chair.
Is that where we want to throw it on to? Um, okay.
I mean, if they if they give me a presentation ahead of time that that has twenty slides, I'm gonna say no. Like you kind of cut it down to like one slide for three minutes or whatever the rule of thumb is and in like, but um but oftentimes we don't get that, right? We get like a picture or the application or whatever else, but I think that's a point well taken and um and and keeping it down to with this, so the select board policy now, and I don't remember what it says off the top of my head, but you the recently recent policies that you guys approved has like a like an like a recommended time limit to presentations, I don't remember what it was, I think it is ten minutes, but it's um and then, so that's what we could enforce.
Okay.
It 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 is difficult when folks are there, you don't want to cut them off and then have, you know, any member of the board think that you you know, cut them off un- unfortunately, or have them suggest that you cut them off. So it becomes difficult, but yes, that's the role of the chair and I'll I'll have to do better. Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay, we move on. Item number sixteen, Manord Golf Course, a new contract to renew their contract with Sterling Golf. Chris, you have any comments on this? You participated in it.
No, I don't have any comments on it other than, you know, it's it's a different contract than they had. There's a lot of different requirements on them. And and you know, Justin and Greg and I have talked about it a bit, Justin and I more than, you know, Greg, John, the three of us. Is is how do we, you know, how do we enforce some of it? So there's gonna be a little bit more onus on us. Just before some of the day to day things, not the money parts, not the things that most people will be worried about, but just kind of um on the ground stuff, you know, uh, there's requirements, additional requirements on them for certain upkeeps and stuff, and that stuff is gonna be what's interesting. But it's it's a, you know, it's a, it's a good deal for the town. It's a little better than the, um, it's, I think it's a little better and a little stronger than the the prior contracts. Wouldn't you agree, Greg?
Yeah, yes, it is. And and it's not, we weren't like tone deaf to what the someone was asking for, like when we, when we had the onsite meeting, I did, I did submit a an addendum to be a little more reflective of what they said, but the the so um but also like, it's kind of weird because they had like a really good year for for golf in the last two years, but then in but in their um in their proposal, they pointed out that like their their bar functions was down. Because people just weren't, you know, according to them, like it was just hard to keep, hard to keep the business of the of the intern or like the bar going.
I will only make one comment on that, and I made it repeatedly. If you don't have a bartender, not a lot of people gonna come to the bar.
Yeah, I was just gonna say the same thing, Chris. This was not a problem just prior during the pandemic, was even before that.
If you don't have a cook in the kitchen.
Yep.
Nothing eat. And I and I say that, I say that because I say that only because those guys are using it as a reason for not doing certain things. I say that knowing that all across the golf industry, food and beverage is off, but you know, at least other people have some options. You could put, you know, you could get pre-made sandwiches from any number of companies. There's two companies and and Concord alone that provide that service. And will, you know, deliver you your sandwiches every morning or whatever, or put a put a hot dog steamer in the corner, anything, but you make no effort.
So they they the contract does require them to submit like uh reports that does just show how they're, I mean, they do that anyways, but as in their current contract, but I think that's a opportunity, as Chris was saying, like, that's an opportunity to kind of like get a bit of grasp over what they're doing on a on a regular basis and then and then see like, oh, they're not, they are continuing not to do um, the bar function as one example, but they know that, like, it was in the RFP and then they heard it, heard us say it like in the in person at the at the like they know that we're interested in their bar functions amongst so many other interests. Uh, so but Mr. Chair, I don't have the signed version, so I'm not, I'm actually.
We're not ready for that?
No, I'm asking that the board postpone this item until I said, I I I got it from town council, I looked it over, town council and I went back and forth, I submitted it over to Sterling Golf. So when I get the sign first, I like, I like the vendor to sign it first, when the contract it gets signed, I'll 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 put it back on the agenda.
Okay. All right, setting a date for the annual town meeting.
So the board, uh, it's that time of year again, so the so the board gets to think about about what you guys are, you know, but the question is what's COVID gonna be like? And um, uh, so right now we have the traditional um time and place of uh, Monday, May sixteenth, twenty twenty-two at seven PM at the Fowler School. Um, but if if we go back to outdoors, you know what to figure that out, but I I think it's the board doesn't have to vote on this this evening if you if you want more time to deliberate and consider it, but um it's not a bad idea to put a place marker. So if you, if the board does vote in favor of if that time, date, location, and then later, this is what we've done a number of times, of course, is we we adjust that date and time um as we see fit.
Once we vote a date in, doesn't it become the purview of the moderator?
Moderator, yeah. Unless I believe that is the general, I believe that is correct unless the board amends that later. But I believe in general, you, it should be a conversation with the moderator anyways.
How many times have we been through town meeting and said, oh, good, I hope we'll be able to do it indoors next time? And we were still outdoors because of the pandemic. So as much as I would love to to hope that we'll be able to be indoors, I'm not sure I would put money on it at this moment in time.
I, yeah, I I think you you kind of, I remember someone sent some some something out to us and uh, what are preferences and some of us, I think, chained in and I I voted for outdoors, yeah, thank you from my perspective.
I I think it's safer to plan outdoors, worse comes to worse. Have it indoors and we have it outdoors anyway.
Right.
It's okay, but if we're planning for indoors and we need to swing it the other way, that's, we have to swing it outdoors if there's a public health concern still. So my my preference is for outdoors.
Anybody else?
I like indoors just because I'm looking for a return to normalcy and I feel like by May, hopefully that will be there. Um, and I'm noticing that other towns are starting to hold their their um, their town meetings indoors. Um, but if that's something that the rest of the board wants to start with um as outdoors and then we'll just go from there, that's that's fine with me.
And my my thoughts are indoors as well in that, you know, we look at the numbers that we've gotten at town meeting. And even when they were outdoors, I think we could accommodate those numbers at an indoor venue. If the numbers remain the same, I don't anticipate there being anything critical on this upcoming meeting that is going to be controversial or whatever. I think we could, I fully understand the concern about, you know, what happens. I think we can do it. I think we could pull it off indoors even under the current circumstances. And have proper distancing even in the room at at the Fowler. I mean, I think it's, I think it's doable. I just think we need to have the uh the, you know, the, I don't want to say courage, but I think we need to have the just, you know, the willingness to accept that that might be the new normal. Or unless it's the new normal, outdoor town meetings forever. I don't know. Any thoughts, Chris?
Chris, you're the tiebreaker. What do you?
I I I I prefer to see it back inside for a lot of different reasons. I mean, I know it's, you know, it's a lot of people are thrilled that it's quicker and stuff outside, but I just think inside, I think there's, I think there were some people who might have gone to the first one and haven't gone back because there there's really a lack of um you know, information at the outdoor ones that as far as I can see, you know, usually we get um, the screen behind us and we're able to have, you know, everything up on the screen so everybody in the room can see it. I just I just, I just prefer that method, but you know, at the end of the day, in all honesty, that Dick's gonna make the decision, so I, why we we pull the five of us and Dick's gonna kind of do what Dick wants to do.
So I guess he's the tiebreaker, Greg.
Well, I don't know if if we if we were to establish it as an indoor date, I don't know what his right is to move it outdoors.
Would be an argument if he wanted it outdoors because I believe that he believes it's his meeting, not ours.
Oh, it 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 is the moderator's meeting, once it's created, it becomes the moderator's meeting, but uh.
I mean, you, so right now it sounds like it's three to two in favor of indoor, so so that's, and that's how the motion is set. So you don't like if you, if the board so wishes, you can, you can, you can move that tonight, or you can wait a couple of weeks, but unfortunately as we've discovered with Omicron, like who who knows? Who knows, like come, you know, by the time we publish the warrant in April, I have no idea what the numbers are gonna be or or what people's comfort level is gonna be.
I don't even know if these numbers that we're seeing are Omicron related anyway. They don't, I don't think, I don't know if they know if it's Omicron related or if it's just Thanksgiving related based on.
Right.
Weaning effectiveness of uh of of the vaccine.
Your your second statement seems to be more accurate from from what I've read, David.
The the effectiveness of the vaccine.
And well, the and the Thanksgiving, not not Omicron as opposed to.
So if we if we decide to, if we vote it indoors, if if it does go, if we vote for indoor and then the numbers change, we can change it as can we change it like like we did last year or were we only able to change it last year because of the executive order? That's my only question.
No, I think you can still, I think the board can still determine this, that I have to check whatever the charter says, but I think that, I think the the where the board I think it's up to the board, the discretion of the board of where town meeting is held, unless, uh, but at some point to David's point earlier, it like the the town moderator does have a a say. But I'm not sure if the town moderator can choose the location ahead of time. I don't, I don't recall the specifics. I don't recall the specifics, but I at this yeah, but I mean, I'm sorry.
I think we would all, I think we would all um, accept that if things were bad in in May or as we approached May, that we could change, we would change it. And we'd move it outside if it was, you know, really, really a dangerous situation.
Reasons we've been outside for, you know, the last several, well, I I agree.
So we we can make, we can establish it for the Monday and leave open the Saturday.
Okay.
If that's what the majority wants to do. And I think we said that, I think that's what where we were coming down on. So let's set, I I'll make a motion if nobody else wants to, I'll make a motion that we set the date for town meeting. Of what is it, May?
Sixteen.
Six, is it sixteenth? May sixteenth, Monday, May sixteenth at seven PM at the Fowler Auditorium. Seven PM, right?
Yeah.
Okay, any further discussion? Jeff?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I'll be a yes too. All right, now the clerical union's contract um, that we discussed in executive session earlier this evening.
So I'll just give a an introduction, Mr. Chairman, so um the the town management, so myself and HR manager Stephanie Duggan have been working across the table, but in partnership, collaboration with the collective bargaining uh unit, I'm sorry, guys, this can late. So with uh with the AFSME Clerical Union, um uh, but for the last year and a half, a little more than that, um, but it's been greatly delayed because primarily because of pandemic. Um, because of some personnel changes and and other issues. But this this contract is for July first, twenty twenty to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Um, and I did, if you refresh your board, if you're looking at board docs and you refresh your board docs, you'll see um, at the direction of the board. You know, having this now an open session, I put the CBA itself so that the public can see what you're voting on. It's in, it's in board docs. So if the right, if the board has any further questions at this time, I'll be, I'll be happy to take them. And publicly, I'd like to give a lot of credit to Stephanie to get in this, to get to getting us this far. Uh, it was a lot of work.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I will move to approve the collective bargaining agreement CBA with the AFSME Local seventeen oh three Clerical Union for July first, twenty twenty to June June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, as presented and authorized in the use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, Jeff?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Armand? Yes, and I am a yes as well. Congratulations and I see Marie is on. Congratulations to Marie too. I know you worked hard on it from what we heard as well.
That's absolutely.
So, all right, um, board member reports, I'll go first, um, and I'll make it quick. Since we last met, and I can't believe that this is, this is true, but since we last met, Jeff and I met with the neighbors over on uh, Park Street in in that area, along with Representative Hogan, had a very good meeting that night, Greg was there as well. Um, where the neighbors were able to give their concerns and express their um, their concerns to Representative Hogan who is working through the legislature to create some legislation that will help avoid some of these issues in the future. Um, the neighbors are concerned about some of the ongoing issues and um they really were were, I think the main thrust of their comments were was communication. Um, I inquired as to if they were concerned about communication from the town and it did not seem to be that that was where they focused their concern on, but rather their communication issues were with uh, EverSource in that they weren't hearing much and were sort of being felt like they were being poo-pooed in many ways or ignored. Those are my words, not not theirs. Um, but Jeff, I don't know if you have any other thoughts to chime in with on that.
Yeah, so they also had a couple of specific proposals, whether it's for possible legislation or in better enforcement of existing legislation. Um, and I thought, I thought they were good, a lot of them were targeted at at preventing um, you know, gas rendering the house in the first place, so it's moving the meters from inside to outside the house, which is a known weak point. Making sure that there's a a a a logical pipe replacement plan and then making sure that the the time for replacing them is actually being enforced by the state. Um, and so hopefully, and I think Representative Hogan was taking good, so hopefully uh, she can incorporate those into the legislation as well.
Yep. Uh, so that was a good meeting and I think they all appreciated the opportunity to meet with us. Um, we got a couple of thank you notes and everything else, which was nice. Um, also, since we last met, I did have an opportunity to meet with Greg and Brian Haas and Hillary Griffiths um, in a leadership meeting, um, which was another meeting that was really, I think it was, it went really well. It was more or less just sort of setting um, guidelines for each other and what we, our expectations were of what when the school committee would approach the town and when the town would approach the school committee as individuals as well as um, as a group. Um, making sure that we understood the boundaries that each other had, talked a little bit about how we uh, react to one another's groups in a public setting. Um, and you know, our willingness to work as a team to um, to achieve our goals as group versus, you know, becoming defensive or offensive on uh, either side. Um, but it was a good meeting. We have another one scheduled for, I think, next Wednesday, is it, Greg? Uh, either side, um, but it was a good meeting. We have another one scheduled for, I think, next Wednesday, is it, Greg? Um, I think, I think so.
I go where my calendar tells me every day. I don't know.
Yeah, I uh, I think it's next, well, it's next week, um. Uh, next Tuesday, the fourteenth, a week from today. Uh, so that's when it's scheduled for. If you can't make it, Greg, just let me know. We can reschedule. Uh, but so that was good and um, we're looking, looking forward to uh, you know, regular meetings. And talking about any concerns. Then I also wanted to comment uh, more so for the public to know. That um, we had our first for this year, our first tri-board meeting recently with the finance committee, the uh, school committee and ourselves. Uh, which I thought really was a good meeting and the presentation that Jeff made was outstanding. And I think well received by everybody who was there. Um, and hopefully we'll gain some access for some, some of the public to see some of it who didn't chime in. Cause we had, we had a robust group watching that beyond those three groups, right? You know, huge group of people. From outside of uh, of the of the three teams, the three groups, but um, I think it was a good discussion. I think it was a good. Um, opportunity to hear some, some thoughts from others. Um, and I hope we have opportunities to do that again. Then lastly, to uh, from on my schedule, uh, as I mentioned. Um, I'll be meeting with Greg and Hillary and Brian again sometime next week. But tomorrow is the, anybody who's interested, there is a meeting of the um, the. Man and Affordable Housing Trust will be talking about some things. I think everybody has seen. Um, the post that the that Town Hall put out about the um, the the upcoming. Um, I don't even know what you want to call it, but the opportunity for the, for the affordable unit over on the property off of um. Off of Parker Street.
Parker Street.
Um, yeah, the the it's not a raffle. What's the term I'm looking for? For uh, for an opportunity for someone who qualifies to get that, the affordable home over there. Very nice. The development's very, very nice. Um, but that's uh, it's very well done. Uh, so that is it for me. Um, and again, um, the the parade that was put on. Um, I'm sure everyone's gonna comment on it, but um, outstanding in such a short period of time to have such a wonderful turnout. And um, you know, everybody seemed to love it and uh, so it was a good day for Manhard on Sunday. That is it for me. Jeff?
Um, no, I'll second uh, the menorah lighting and the parade, um, wonderful event, so big thank you to the organizers of both those. Um, uh, and in addition to the um, meeting that David referenced to the gas, I also attended another meeting with. Um, N C four, which is the the climate change group out of Pepperell. Um, they're putting together basically a comparative spreadsheet just to show of all the different communities, who's done what in terms of different sustainability. So you can look across and see, all right, eighty percent of other towns have done this, maybe we should get on board or no, only one other town out of this whole group has done it. So that's, that's not quite as robust thing to do. Um, I am still um, uh, organizing and putting the other names for. Uh, Sustainability Committee, um, but I hope to get that for a January meeting, so um, be on the lookout for that. And that is all I have right now.
Thank you. Justine?
Uh, just a couple of things. I want to echo, uh, I unfortunately was not able to make the menorah lighting, um, but I want to thank the organizers. Um, I know Lauren Bell had a big part in that, um, and and you know, I'm glad that that is a part of our town now. Um, I also want to thank um, Jen, obviously Jen Baccarelli for uh, the parade. It was, I I think that, I think the thing that stuns me is the fact that it all happened in two weeks, um, and I. And I'm completely impressed um, with the heart that went into it and how everyone stepped up to make it happen and um, the fact that it benefited. Um, you know, the food organizations and help with food insecurity and and helped shine some, you know, shine a light on some unsung heroes. Uh, you know, recognized Marge, recognized Rocco. I mean, she really kind of hit a lot of the high points and and I really appreciate the thought that went into all of that. Um, a couple more things, uh, so. I'm meeting with uh, as part of the school building committee, uh, leadership team. We are meeting um, on. Thursday with, I believe it's with MSBA plus. The design group plus R O P M. Uh, to kind of lay out a game plan for the educational vis- visioning. Uh, sessions that are gonna happen next, and that's gonna be uh, where we engage the community. Um, and really kind of find out what everybody is looking for, um. And how that will work and how that will look and how to, how to actually reach out to the community and who to reach out to and and all that, so. Um, I'll definitely report back to that, uh, about that when uh, when we're done with that. And um, last thing is, of course, the um, the W A V M telethon is this weekend. Uh, the kids are working really hard. Um, I'd love to see, you know, I'd love to see a lot of donations. Um, you know, it's great to have it back after, after a year hiatus. I mean, they are working hard and. Kind of the same thing that, you know, Jen just went through with the two week thing. They, they started planning, I think, back in October, you know. End of September, beginning of October, normally they're planning this in August, so they weren't even sure they were gonna be able to have it until a little while ago, so. Um, so I look forward to seeing that and uh, that's it.
Thank you. Chris?
Real quick, if I may, um, just even. A good quick question about the MSBA to, it, um, notice that minutes weren't being uploaded. Do you know if we can get those uploaded onto the website?
So they're not our, so Greg, I don't know if I S S C you unmuted, because I know they're not our minutes, they're the schools' minutes. Um, but I had, I had actually had a resident reach out to me and ask me about that as well, and I referred her to um, Colleen Andrade. Um, from the schools. The one thing that I did note is the fact that um, in the last three or four meetings, we have not approved any minutes. So I, there aren't actually minutes that are. Yeah, like I said, of the last three or four meetings, I don't, there there's nothing that's been approved, so those would not be posted yet.
I I also, I'm aware that the minutes are not being posted, so I I talked with Brian Haas about it and he and I are gonna make sure that something, we need to be better about that. Point, point taken.
Okay, thank you.
Chris?
No, I don't really have anything. Just congratulations to Jen on all the hard work she did on the parade. It turned out great, I guess. Sadly, I missed it.
Well, thank you.
To you. Thanks to you too, Chris.
Very much.
She claims, she claims you saved it, so.
I found insurance, that's all.
Still.
Armand?
Although the people from Arkansas kept calling me, how was the parade? How was the parade? I don't know how the parade was.
Should have told them, just wait till the claim comes.
That was good.
They cashed a check, so so it wasn't shared.
Go ahead, Armand.
Um, first of all, I echo everybody's um, you know, um, kudos uh, to Jen and her team for pulling off. Probably a tremendous, and um, the turnout was really nice. The weather was good, so obviously everybody enjoyed themselves. It was really fun to be at. Um, I also had the opportunity to uh, represent the select board at the um, dedication of the bridge. Uh, to the Manor Crossing for Seska Centennial. They did a nice job. Capital Group came through and and dedicated the plaque. Uh, for us, so that was really nice. Um, and myself and Jeff, well, we were able to uh, be at the menorah lighting, which was really exciting. Uh, I know Greg was there and and it was really exciting to uh, to be part of that tradition that's gonna be going on for a while. Um, and then the last thing is um, I was um, um, able to attend Saturday night's. Um, fundraising concert for Art Space, um, and Gail Irwin, she was the president of uh, the Board of Directors. She recognized and thanked um, the town for the support that we're giving Art Space, so I think it's nice to. Uh, publicly, she recognized uh, that, so it was important to hear that. Anyway, that's all I got.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Chris already has his pajamas on.
Prepared to go. All right, everybody.